Okay, you let me know.
Five.
You let me know.
Sure.
Do you want us to get started?
Yes, so Donnie's moving his daughter in Texas. He's gone until tomorrow. And then it's just like right away in the morning.
All right, we are ready whenever you are.
Yes, so Donnie's.
Someone's pressing with me. Good, good morning, everyone. I would like to call our meeting to order today and would you please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Oh, there we go. Be stable there, bro. Doink, man.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks a lot, Steve.
Commissioner dies from free flag accident.
You'll just keep rolling right along.
Yeah.
Somebody's sliding over just because she got hit in the head.
Yeah.
Just don't fall on a tree.
We'll lay you flat anyway.
I'm feeling the love this morning.
We'll lay you flat, I think.
Whoop that.
Oh, is that?
Motions for parents.
Yeah.
All right.
It was an eye.
Welcome, everyone. Um, I, I know we have public comment period, but I have a little announcement. Over the weekend, Stan Roser passed away. Stan was ninety-two. He died Saturday, the fourth, at his home in Litchfield. They're going to have a gathering on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, from one to four at Johnson Hagerlin Funeral Home here in Litchfield to remember Stan. Stan spent many days and hours covering the county board over his years in the newspaper business here in Litchfield. And he also continued through his retirement as a reporter. So we remember Stan Roser today. All right, it is time for public comment. Do we have any folks today? Yes, would you like to come and, and address the board? Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. You bet. Yep.
Have a chair.
Okay. Use the microphone?
Sure.
Good morning.
All the years I've been around, it's probably about a handful of times I've been in front of the board. Marlene Trump, I just retired from the Meeker County nine-one-one dispatch center on September third, forty-six years after the day I first started.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're welcome. And what I'm here for is to do a plea for the, my fellow dispatchers. What's happening is, again, back in the late nineteen-nineties, we were running short. We needed dispatchers. They're hard to find. Uh, training then was about two months to, to train somebody. And, um, we would get them trained. Some would quit before they made it because of the type of calls we take. The multitasking that you have to do. Um, and others would make it only to be hired by Candy High County. We did all the training. I see that's happening again now. We're doing a lot of training. It's not taking two months. It's taking almost five months to train. There's, uh, things have expanded in dispatch, a lot of responsibility, um, tremendous amount of things that we are expected to do. And after a while, granted, it becomes second nature. Uh, now we're training and we just lost two, to Stearns County that we're going to be part-time dispatchers that we need very, very badly. Um, we do have some part-timers that started. We do have one that's, um, going to take Rob and LaLawn's place, but she's having questions about working those hours when there's no two dispatchers on. We have thirty-six hours a week. For the amount of money that we're paying out and training people where they're then going to another county, I'm just asking if we couldn't find something in the budget so we could have two people on. It's a scary thing to sit there when all hat breaks loose. Like a couple of year, a couple of weeks ago, there was four medicals, two very serious. Unfortunately, we had two people on that because you're dealing with, um, the ambulances, the rescue, the fires, and then you need to call your backup ambulances. And you still have to field all the other calls that are coming in, things that you don't hear on the radio. There's a lot of, uh, behind the scenes going on. So I'm just, I'd just like to see something for them so we could go to two full-time. I know we have downtime, but when it hits, it hits. And it's nice to have two of us there. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For your comment. Very nice.
Have a good day.
Thank you for your service.
Yep. Do we have any other? Yes, come.
I don't know. This, I'm Wayne Cannon. I live on Big Swan Lake. I've talked to several of the board members before. And it's just a plea for help. Um, about getting our weir dam put out there. We've jumped through all the loopholes from the DNR. We had a hundred-year study. And I believe that's our holdup now is the DNR. We have gotten our permit or not.
Yep, they're still waiting on that.
Yes, but we've, we've had to go through a hundred-year study. We've had to go through a two-hundred-year study on the effect of raising our water level. And they, it was the height that we could do it at. But now, there's a possibility it might not even happen, you know? They've, the state and the county, um, there's three groups in the DNR. They came up with a price and they told us it would be an extra ten thousand dollars to have this weir put on. The lake association has come up with this ten thousand dollars and more. Well, now they're saying that they're going to prep it. So if we needed to have that put on afterwards, um, this ten thousand dollars is the cost it would cost to put it in at the time to put the culvert in. I worked in putting in these box culverts for over twenty years. And there's no way they can do all the prep because they have to pull out. They would have to pull the first apron off, the new culvert they just put in to get their side panels apron up high enough. At the end of this culvert, there's a drop wall. They would have to come in with a crane. Maybe a backhoe could handle it, but they would have to come back in and pull this first piece of apron off, pull this drop wall back out, extend it back out, put this drop wall back in and put the remaining. And I was never in the bidding, but I'm thinking that's another ten thousand dollars to have them come back in. You know, so if this doesn't happen at the time that the culvert gets put in, it's never going to happen. Um, and I seen another, I was reading in my outdoor news, the DNR is saying how much more money they're going to have to expend to extend these boat landings. Well, if we got a weir, they wouldn't have to do it on Big Swan. So, um, I'm just here for, to let everybody know what our situation is over there. I have to walk. Remember where my shoreline should be? I gotta walk out a hundred feet onto the lake to get to deep enough water to anchor my boat out there. Um, it's, I mean, I, I understand this is an extreme year, but this is not the first year this has happened on Big Swan. Like, because we have inlet-outlet from the river. So if the river goes way down, our lake goes way down. And we don't, we know we can't do anything about our high-water mark because it's considered a watershed lake. And we get taxed the same as a recreational lake, you know? Um, and lots of times, our lake will fluctuate ten to eleven feet a year from high to low. Um, but if we had this weir dam in there, it would at least keep our low level higher so people could have access. I mean, it decreases our property values by a whole lot. You see, you got Lake Shorewell? No, you gotta walk out a hundred feet to get to the water, you know, so. If I'm just here for a plea for letting everybody know about our situation. Um, I guess that's all I got. And I, well, I hope at one point we'll discuss this. Because I believe it's, we're having trouble with the property owner too on the lake and, um, I don't know what's, and I haven't heard anything about our prop, with this person. So, but, uh, I know if it comes down to a certain point, your board members will have to vote on this, the problem they have with this, with this guy, property owner, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yep. All right. Do we have any other folks that would care to share public comment time?
I'm just here to check out government.
All right, otherwise, you're, you're welcome to the table.
Just wanted to see real news.
All right. Thank you. All right, well then, if we hear no other public comments, we'll move to our agenda for today. Everyone had a chance to take a look at the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second that, Madam Chair.
Any discussion about our agenda? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have two sets of minutes. And I'm assuming we have to take them individually, or can we do them all at the same time?
You can do it at the same time.
All right. So we have two sets of minutes.
Madam Chair, move to approve August tenth minutes and August seventeenth.
Do I hear a second?
Also, I got Madam Chair.
Okay. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion about either of the sets of minutes before us? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then, we have our next presenter, Lindsay.
Yes. Good morning. Oh, it's nice to see you in person, although in masks again. But please let me know if you have a hard time hearing me, your understanding. I'll try to speak a little slower or enunciate more.
All right, you might want to pull the mic a little closer. I have it for recording just.
Okay.
How's that?
A little better?
That's good.
So I am going to give you a presentation on our upcoming projects, um, over the next ten years. So you have a map of that in front of you and just a little bit of background about kind of how we get to these projects. So, my first slide is an overview of the funding District Eight gets. So that is the twelve counties in the southwest part of the state, so basically from Meeker County West and South, see on the map. And you'll see it varies a little bit year from year, and that is based on the need, um, of the roadway system. Miles in good and poor and fair condition and traffic volumes and things. But generally, we're around forty to fifty million dollars a year for our, um, annual program to kind of give you some context of what we're dealing with. This does not include, um, let's say, like specialty funds or discretionary funds like the corridors of commerce funds that will be used on Highway twenty-three or like the federal, um, tiger grant that was used for the, or why. This is just our baseline funding because those skew it pretty drastically, like double or triple the amount. So just wanted to show the averages. And then on a statewide, um, basis, we plan for our investment direction over a twenty-year time horizon. And this is literally the investment direction we are working on right now. Um, so the districts can't just spend all their money in one area. Maybe say like mobility projects or something like that. You'll see we have very little to spend there. But, um, you'll see there's different time periods here and the percentages of money changes over that time period. In essence, to allow the projects that are being developed at the time of planning for this twenty-year investment direction to stay pretty much the same. So we're not constantly starting over on them and never getting around to building them. So then you have kind of a transition period and then, you know, planning out in those further years. Um, and, and you'll see that we've kind of, over the years, now have shifted more money towards pavement, you know, up from thirty-three and a half percent to almost fifty-three percent, just kind of due to the condition of pavements. Backed off on bridges a little bit, and that was primarily due to the increased, um, Chapter One Fifty-two bonding funds. After the I thirty-five W collapse, there's an influx of money. So, so this is our overall investment direction. And we are updating this right now. We, we call this twenty-year planmanship, the State Highway Investment Plan. And, um, central office staff lead that plan and they will be coming out to do, um, or maybe it'll be more online depending on how things go, but to get input from people around the state on how this might change over the next five years. We update it every five years. So be maybe on alert or, uh, looking to provide input there. And I really encourage you to do so because it literally directs how we spend money and it translates to the projects you see on the map. And Phil will be a part of that through our ATP, um, and other, uh, email correspondence as well. So you can always talk to him about any thoughts you have too. And next, I wanted to give you kind of a current state of our roadways using a couple different measures. The first one is the ride quality index. This basically is a measurement of the smoothness of the road's surface. And you'll see it looks pretty good. There's a lot of green. There's some yellow. You'll see red is typically very small dots in communities. I should mention too, this data is twenty-twenty pavement data. So actually was probably when the van drove the section, it was probably nineteen. So it's a little bit old. So like the Highway seventy-five project in the northwest corner, that was done, you know, since this data. And Highway twenty-three, south of Granite Falls, that was done since this was collected. So those would be green now. But, um, it was the latest data map we had. Uh, the next map is a different measure of remaining service life. And, and this is the one where you can kind of see what is to come, that things aren't looking nearly as good as they did on the other map. The remaining service life is literally how much life we expect that pavement, um, to have. So it's kind of a broader measure. And, you know, indicates that maybe the condition of our system isn't as healthy as that surface quality would lead, lead us to believe. And the next slide really indicates that, um, with the performance measures now at the end of our four-year plans of twenty-twenty-five and then at the end of our ten-year plan. So you'll see right now, uh, for the pavements in poor condition, we're looking really good, not even one percent poor. It's great. We, and we still get, you know, complaints about poor roads, right? At the end of our four-year plan, end of our, uh, step, still looking pretty good. Um, especially so the NHS are higher volume roadways like Highway twelve. The non-NHS are lower volume roadways, Highway four, twenty-two. Um, but then by the end of the ten-year period, I mean, we have almost eight, nineteen percent of our lower volume roadways are going to be in poor condition. And just over seven percent of those higher volume roadways. And, and both of those percentages are well above the target we are supposed to be meeting. Um, for the non-NHS, it's about four percent poor, or sorry, for the NHS, four percent poor. So the green bar should be around four. And the blue bar for the lower volume roadways is ten percent is the goal. So, not doing so well. Um, we will be taking a hard look at our program of projects over this coming year, which we, we update these annually to try to mitigate that. We may be receiving some additional funding, um, from the state. The, every year, it seems like there's one or maybe two districts that have much lower performance than the others. And, and that would be us right now. Um, and, you know, it's because the formulas aren't perfect, right, and projections and things. So we may see some more funding, um, but right now we're, you know, we still don't quite know, but we're working to improve that. And I will say it's probably a worst-case scenario as the models tend to be a little bit more conservative and they don't account for preventive maintenance that we do. Um, because we put in a kind of a lump sum line item in our program and it doesn't have a location. So it can't predict if it doesn't have a location. So, but still, you know, worse, and, and last year, that blue bar at the end of the chip was around twelve percent. So it's trending in the wrong direction too. So reasons for concern. The pavements in good condition, they are going down as well. I mean, not as dramatic as pavements in poor condition. But that information is there as well. We do the same forecasting for bridges. Good news is this is a much better story than our pavements. Um, you'll see, you know, for both the higher volume roadways on the left and the lower volume roadways on the right, it seems like we're meeting or close to meeting for the poor bridges. And, and that doesn't mean they're like a fracture-critical bridge. It just, um, it, it's not to that level. There might be for certain bridges, like a load restriction or something like that, but it's not where you'd be shutting it down. Um, but you do see the good bridges trending downward, fair bridges, you know, we're going to see a lot more fair condition, um, in the future. We, the Dist- District Eight has been doing, um, preventive maintenance on our bridges now for a while too, to try to mitigate some of this. But this is not nearly as concerning as the pavements. So switching topics a little bit, um, but kind of getting towards the map of projects is our project selection process. Um, in the twenty-seventeen legislative session, the legislature put in a requirement to, that we not adopt a project selection policy. This did not drastically change the way we selected projects. They are basically, um, selected based on bridge and pavement need from our modeling systems, so, um, but this kind of gave a more formal process and added a few elements to it. And, um, and so now, projects are, um, basically selected from four different categories. Those asset management projects, so pavement and bridge, basically keeping what we have in good condition, safety. And that would be any new safety items, mobility or capacity expansion projects. And then, you know, the catch-all specialty or competitive programs, and that would be corridors of commerce, break program, um, things like that. So, and I should just mention too, so projects are basically selected based on the need and the location. But then elements of the project, you know, drainage or, um, signage, things like that, that's part of a scoping process and not necessarily project selection. And this shows some of the details of the selection criteria for pavements, just because it's the most common type of project we select. Um, and so you'll see sixty points goes to the need. They're calling it the time, timing of the improvement. And that's based on that RQI data that I showed, that first map. They're also giving some points to higher volume roadways, uh, traffic volumes, traffic, volumes, how long is the project? And if it has other infrastructure needs, um, so getting to projects that have a variety of needs. And then for the non-NHS, the lower volume roadways, another consideration is if we could turn it back to city, county, township. So that kind of leads us into our projects throughout the district and throughout your county zoomed in a little bit. Like I said, we plan for ten years. Um, we, we, and we update this plan every year in the spring. Um, and then go out for comments. So any comments, you know, this year can be updated when we redo this next year. But the first project is a, uh, twenty-twenty-two project, so next year on Highway four. Um, from, uh, the northern limits of Cosmos to Meeker, Casaw twenty-three. It is a reclaim and overlay, so that is a longer life fix. And, and we've been trying to do a variety of fixes from thinner projects to these bigger, uh, longer lasting. But you'll see, you know, that comes with a higher price tag of five-point-three million, and we're going to pay for it over two years. Um, and Jacob Magus is your project manager on that. Uh, I do believe there is a website for this one too, if you wanted to check out our website. The next one is actually one that's led by the county, but it was through our local partnership program. It's the, call it the rest area, um, by Darwin and resurfacing the parking lot. Estimate, at least when it was turned in, was three-sixty. It may, may be going up a little bit. Okay, good deal. Um, so locally led, but the MINDAC contact would be Ron Mortensen. Next one is in twenty-twenty-three on Highway fifteen. Um, basically from Highway twelve to the Meeker-Stearns County line, district boundary. This again is a reclaim and overlay, so bigger, longer life project. We know this one has been patched a lot and really, really is in need of some work. So nine-point-four million, um, again, paid for over two years, and your project manager is Jacob Miller. The next one is on Highway twelve in twenty-twenty-four, and actually the next two kind of go together. And this is from here in Litchfield, uh, Holcomb Ave to near Meeker, Casaw fourteen in Darwin. This is a medium millen overlay through Litchfield. And then a micro mill and ultra-thin bonded wearing course in the rural section. Um, it also includes some ADA or sidewalk pedestrian updates, so curb ramps, sidewalk, uh, driveway aprons in Litchfield and Darwin, along with intersection improvements to Casaw thirty-four. The estimate is two-point-one million, and Lowell Latin is the project manager. And then this is basically picking up from where the last project left off and continuing east to Kokato. This is major concrete pavement rehab, diamond grinding, smooth that surface, plus, uh, ADA work in the towns, um, Desle and Kokato. Estimate is four-point-six million, and Alex Winiger is your project manager for that.
If I can ask a question?
Yeah.
Kokato did all of that, so very little up to that line between Wright and, and Meeker County, right?
The ADA?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. Okay, so then it'll be in Desle almost. Yeah. We won't redo anything that was recently done.
Because they went all the way out past the school, if I'm correct, which is almost to the line.
Okay.
Meeker and Wright, isn't that correct, Phil?
Their paving project ended on the west end of Kokato.
Okay, so this will go right up to that, but we won't redo any ADA that was recently done, yeah. Sometimes the details of, you know, the exact ins and outs, I try, I try to keep a decent check of all the projects, but the details of all of them, there's a little too much sometimes. But, uh, then, the next project, and this is out in twenty-twenty-seven on Highway twenty-two. So really not scoped yet. It's more of just that need identification stage. But, um, basically Highway twelve to Frederick's Avenue in Eden Valley. This is planned as a thin millen overlay for two-point-one million, and we don't have a project manager assigned because it is not scoped. So these types of projects, if you have any comments, we can then add them to our scoping notes when we do that, probably in a year or two. So, yeah, right now, it's just a need identification. Similarly to this next one in twenty-twenty-nine, Highway four, uh, bridge project to replace the bridge, uh, south of Cosmos. Uh, a little over two and a half miles north of the Meeker. A little over two and a half miles north of the Meeker-Rhettville County Line for about 2.9 million. Again, no project manager assigned. And then the last is two bridges replacing these that are, saw the 55 north of Grove City. 2.2 million is our estimate. And again, no project manager assigned. And not yet scoped. So those are the projects in your area. You do have this for our whole district. If you have questions or comments on any other projects, either take those two or if you have any questions at any time after this, you know, talking to somebody or think of something later. Our contact information is on, on the back of the presentation and then mine is on the map. I will just mention that I'll be out on maternity leave in about four months or four weeks. Hopefully more like three weeks. But you can contact Megan, she's our principal planner and she can answer any questions as well.
Well, I like what you did on the west side of Wilmer, the new roundabouts and the way that that, I mean, it just flows, right?
Yeah.
If you're going west on 12, this is.
Yep, yep, I take that in to get to the Wilmer office and I agree, it's kind of nice to keep going. And and if you're coming on County Road Five from south of there, the way if there's a train, it's not so bad anymore.
Can I ask, the thin overlays, I know you just did one on 22, you widened there. Look from Eden to Highway 12 a couple of years ago.
That was kind of an experimental.
That's what I was, that's what my understanding was at the time. So I guess my question is, how is that? I mean, I know that the concrete underneath was, I mean, it's blistering again now.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just kind of curious, how, what are you seeing on that type of project?
So the other thin millon overlay project, what's that on? The 22.
North 22.
Yep, so I, it's 22, probably a thin millon overlay. So that would be a little different. The idea, when we do a thin millon overlay, the idea is to keep a good road in good condition longer. And the 24 was concrete, right? So we typically haven't done a thin concrete treatment besides these kind of ultra thin bonding bonded wearing courses. And that was a little different. My understanding is that it is held up okay, maybe better than expected. But I can talk to our pavement folks for a little more detailed information.
That's what you're saying, yeah. Because they, now when they did 55, I think a year prior to that, going to Painsville, that one they dug out some of the concrete, patched the concrete and then overlaid it with a thicker layer of, uh, blacked up. And, and then the following year they did 22 with the thin overlay and that, that was experimental. And they didn't dig out any concrete or anything like that.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I drive the road all the time, so I can tell where those spots are yet. I was just kind of curious what, you know, what the evaluation from that standpoint.
Let me ask our materials folks.
Good, fair, poor, I mean, how has it been working?
Let me just check the data here. Yeah, so it's looking like it's in fair, fair condition for the remaining service life, but good condition on the ride quality.
Yeah, oh, it's much better.
So.
I mean, that, that, it's.
Which makes sense, right, if that concrete underneath was.
But they widened it two feet too.
Yeah.
That was huge.
Yes, yep, yep.
Big benefactor.
So I think, yeah, kind of that overall life is still fair, but the surface of it is.
But I'm assuming, yeah, tearing all the concrete road and replays.
It's hard, yeah. And that's, I think that's kind of the reason why they so tried this experimental thin treatment is because the alternative is just so costly. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, feel free to reach out or even, you know, pass messages through Phil if you have any or hear anything. Thanks for having us out today.
Very good.
And good luck on your little boy or little girl.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know what it'll be either.
Maybe it's one of each.
It's gonna be a surprise. Really be a surprise.
I have a two year old.
Bad timing, Paul, to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right. Then now we have Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Phil Spalt, Works Director. Any items for you today, I believe? First one is to consider a maintenance agreement with the city of Cosmos via Resolution 2021-21. So historically, Meeker County's done a lot of maintenance in the city of Cosmos without reimbursement, without agreement. So we put together an agreement. The city of Cosmos did approve it, I think, a few months ago. New agreement will outline the responsibilities of both the county and the city on our state aid routes. For the county, it's primarily the Center 24, non utilities, that's what we take care of. Everything else, curb and gutter, road surface outside the Center 24, the city addresses with reconstruction and maintenance. It also identifies a couple of roads that the city would like the county to take care of for them. One of them is snow and ice service on the frontage road that's actually right out by our shop on the east end of town. And then three roads that we'll be blading for them, gravel road maintenance. And all of that work will be done based on our hourly fee schedule. So recommended motion would be to approve or adopt the Resolution 2021-21 for this agreement for maintenance on Cosmos city streets.
Madam Chair, move to approve Resolution 2021-21 regarding road maintenance agreement with the city of Cosmos.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, I'm sorry.
Second, that's second. We have a motion that has been seconded, is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question. When we built the new shed, then we had that other shed in Cosmos.
Yes.
Did they purchase that or?
Yep, the city of Cosmos bought that shed and the salt storage facility next to that shed.
So they paid, because then I, I thought then they were taking on more of the maintenance or something.
They are, we used to do pretty much all of the snow and ice removal in town. They now have their own operator.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
So just a quick question. I think they just let their contract for their infrastructure upgrade. Is that going to affect any of the roads around ours?
I hope not, because I did not hear about their project.
Oh, it's a water sewer?
Okay, it shouldn't be in any of our state aids.
Okay.
Is their maintenance a dollar for dollar or is it like the design like the townships? I was just curious.
Dollar for dollar, it'll be based on our fee schedule. So if we do two hours of work, they'll pay for two hours based on what we have on our annual fee schedule.
Gotcha.
Because I see here there'll be snow plowing and updating of the gravel roads and such. And how will that affect your budget, Phil, or?
Very minor. The work we're going to do for them will be upon request, so it won't be frequent. It won't be routine like the townships.
And that will be when you have the time?
Yes.
Won't interfere with schedule?
Correct, and we'll work it into our blade routes, we'll work it into our snow and ice routes.
Any other questions for Phil? We have a discussion. Hearing none, we will take the vote. And Corey, because it is a resolution, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeisun?
Yes. Motion carries, resolution carries.
Second item I have is to consider Resolution 2021-22, which is to request a speed study on Kasah 23. Here's a map that roughly shows where Kasah 23, or Kasah 33, sorry, lies. It runs between Kasah 9 and 14 on the south end of Lake Stella. You can kind of make it out from the drawing, there's a fair amount of residential development. There's a big curve in the road, it's a short segment, a little more than a mile long, if I remember correctly. Current speed limit on that road is 55 miles an hour. Like I said, high residential density, there's pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And existing traffic speeds in general are slower than 55 miles an hour when I've been on the road. I think it's not a road where you could comfortably drive 55 or 60 miles an hour. I believe a speed limit adjustment is warranted on this section.
Yeah, I drove it, I live right next to it, but I drove it yesterday just specifically. And it really is on the west end where the greatest potential for danger would exist.
Yeah, especially with the way it ties in to Kasah 9, it's twisty.
Yeah, and it's kind of a, so there are some vision issues there and there is a lot of parking.
Yep.
You know, on the weekends, in the ditch and so forth, which caused.
I've got a lot of complaints.
They're wanting to at least study it and take a look at it.
Yes, I think this one is warranted. And just so everyone's aware, Kasah 14 is the north-south piece between Washington and Stella. I get requests for speed study on that road frequently. And the one obstacle we have is if you look at this slide, a big part of the consideration of a speed study when they set the speed limit, MinDOT sets the speed limits, is existing traffic speed. So if vehicles are speeding, that would actually work against you if you're doing a speed study to reduce the speed limit. So something to keep in mind, that's why I'm bringing 33 today. 14, I'm doing some other things with right now, but not a speed study at this point in time.
I've, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, don't.
A couple of years ago when all that started between, we put the, the speed, the sign out, just to get people to slow down.
On 14?
Yeah. I don't know if we've done that recently, but I don't, and I don't know how much difference it makes. There's a lot of people walking and biking.
I know the sheriff's office had the sign up, I don't know if it's still up, making a month to go.
I haven't been out there lately, so.
And I am working with the sheriff's office to.
Is it there?
Putting some interactive speed signs out there to at least catch people's attention, let them know how fast they are traveling inside the 45 mile.
Yeah, that's the, what I'm talking about though.
Yep.
Well, and then you're gonna, you know, once you redo 14. The same thing happened on 33, well, the road is so nice to drive now, it's easier to go faster.
Yes.
Because it's just a very, very smooth and a nice piece of pavement. Same thing's gonna happen on, on 14 in that section in the middle.
Smoother pavement will encourage higher speeds.
Yeah, so.
But so speed studies in general, just so you understand, they're governed, our speed limits are governed by Statute 169.14. The commissioner of transportation sets speed limits in this state. There are some exceptions in the sight of small cities. But for counties, everything we do is set by the commissioner, which is MinDOT. Statewide consistency and a formal traffic study, I guess to make things consistent, that's why we do things that way. There are listed considerations, access density, non-vehicle traffic, that's your pedestrians, bicyclers, existing traffic speeds, horizontal alignment, site distance. Those are the things that'll go into the study. And as part, to get a study done, we have to pass a resolution, the Congress has to pass a resolution requesting a study from MinDOT.
How long does it take to complete that?
I've seen anywhere between two months and two years.
Oh.
So I think it depends on what's on that part of our district's MinDOT forces plate at the time. As far as when they can get the study done and then get the analysis done behind the study.
So you're saying though, the faster people actually drive on that, it's more likely not to reduce it then? That's part of the equation, it's part of the equation.
This is 55, so it's not going to raise it. But that's our concern on Kasah 14. If we did a speed study right now, the study may warrant a 50 or 55 instead of the existing 45. And that's the opposite of what we're looking for.
Right.
So we're going to do some other homework before we move forward with the study. Because once you have speed study and results, you have to act on those results.
That's why you're not ready to jump on everyone then.
Yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 21, 22, request MinDOT conduct a traffic speed study on CSAH 33.
I'll second Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion, it has been seconded, is there any discussion? Is there a cost to Meeker County?
No cost, no cost to the county.
Any additional questions or discussion for Phil? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. And Corey, because it's a resolution, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeisun?
Yes. Resolution carries.
Final item I have for you is to consider the acceptance, final acceptance of our SealCo contract for the year. We complete a SealCo contract annually. This year is a smaller contract than we had most years, only at about 14 miles as part of the contract. Lots of short segments, you see by the number of roads I listed there. We use them for preservation, preservation of new pavement and maintenance fixes. So preserving, patching or crack filling that's been done in the past.
And you're satisfied with all the work that was done?
Yes, everything was done, done well, to our satisfaction. We had about, we had $200,000 in our budget for 2021. Our final price for our program was about $175,000. As I said, the work was completed to our satisfaction.
Madam Chair, move for final acceptance and payment for the 2021 annual SealCo contract.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, is there any discussion? Questions for Phil? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
One other item I was just going to touch on, so Big Swan Outlet, we had a gentleman this morning come and bring that to us. Just so you know where things are at, we submitted our DNR permit in November. Expected a quick turnaround, it's still pending. And the approval or denial of that permit will drive our right of way process, because that will change what we ask for and it could change how the property owner we're working with feels about our proposal. So that's why things are hung up. Once the DNR gives us a response, which I expect to be an approved permit, we can move forward, forward with the right avenue with the right of way acquisition.
I, I got a call, I'm assuming it was from this gentleman. You know, those people have worked hard, this has been a project that's been worked on for three to four years here.
Three decades.
Well, but since I've been, where it's come to the forefront. And they've done every hoop they've asked to jump through, they've done. So I hope we can help them because this is the time, in my opinion, to get this done.
Well, it's a, they're gonna pick up any additional costs, correct?
Correct.
They're paying for it, so it's a no cost to the county.
Correct.
It's the permit.
Is that accurate? Because what if we have to go to?
Well, I hope to have an agreement, you mean condemnation?
Correct, based upon.
That's how those costs are handled.
So that's not an accurate statement at this point? There's still things that we need to consider legally and so I don't think that's a presumption we should be making just yet. We'll continue working that route, but before the county makes a decision, I think we should have where we're standing legally.
And we will have a board, a full board discussion about this. My, my hope is, once the DNR approves the permit, we can, I'll have one more discussion with the property owner and then I can have a discussion with the board.
And we have to include additional property? Would the county have to purchase additional?
Yep, we'd purchase right of way to encompass the culvert project and the outlet and inlet rip wrap. That's what we have to purchase for future maintenance.
What if the DNR denies it?
If they deny the permit, then we'll be approaching us, the property owner bought a smaller parcel of land, slightly smaller. And the property owner has not indicated if they'd be willing to sign an easement if we did not have a Weir's part of the project. So I, that's where I'm still unsure where we're going to end up.
It's going to be all about the right of way and how we can get it or not. We'll be fighting to get the right of way just for our culvert itself. So it's a lot trickier than, than it looks.
Yeah.
Why it's been 18 years going on.
There's a reason it hasn't been done yet, I think. We'll get it, one way or another. Any other questions for me?
Hearing none, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil, thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good.
Wernery.
I like that.
To get started, I'm Nicole, kind of give you up to date on where we're at from a financial standpoint.
Yeah, so you have a statement of revenue and expense from January to July. We have been working pretty diligently, this is prepared to. Uh, we have been working pretty diligently, this is compared to true of our expenses. So if you recall, we are leasing a lot of the clinic operations, about twenty to twenty-five percent of our expenses. They went through a pretty big conversion project this year, and we are now just getting into the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one. Actual expenses with them, we have not gotten the second quarter yet, but from what I'm seeing out of the first quarter, we are sitting. Better than we had projected here in this statement. Um, our monthly accruals were too high for the first quarter, but I don't have final numbers yet, just because we don't have the second quarter true up.
They went through a whole system of what's called Oracle, anything that wasn't on Epic, it was their GL, it was their HR. And it created a mess, um, for them, um, so then it creates a mess for us. Um, but I think they've worked through it and hopefully. We can finalize within the next couple of weeks.
We did, um, we, on a side note, we did just true-up poll of twenty-twenty-two, so that means that we had a twenty. We also trueed up twenty-twenty. And so we are just wrapping up our audit and we have also finished our twenty-twenty cost report, which also had a benefit for us. For the prior year and into our projection for twenty-twenty-one. So we anticipate here in the next month to have some updated numbers that are closer to actual.
And I think when you did the estimates, you did them high purposely.
Yep, yep.
When we went through that.
Yep, we've had a number of transitions as well with our providers, as where they're operating and the position costs.
Questions on financials?
We have before us the April nineteenth minutes. How many times a year do you meet?
Six.
Six times?
Yep.
Every other.
We, yeah, we did not have a quorum.
Yeah, there's one that we didn't have.
Meeting, so there were not many.
As I'm looking at the, the second page where it lists revenues and expenses, I'm looking at May. And I had a question, what happened to Dassel and the Eden Valley Clinics that, that was quite a?
That's a great question, so, um, actually what happened is they were still operating and what our numbers are reflecting is that we transitioned our coding team. So our coding was previously done by Centra Care employees, that was for, um, all of our clinic operations and just a little bit of our inpatient. So on May first, they transitioned and we actually have another team that came in, it's I Bailey. They're doing, uh, coding, but it did take them three to four weeks to get in and to make sure that they were operating under our regulations. So in May, we actually have a three to four week leg that starts. And so as I'm looking, you know, what the year-to-date is presenting here, there's actually three to four weeks following that July cutoff. Of coded charges that were, were not accrued at the time that we created this, so.
They're still open, they just, from the billing and coding, it's three weeks still.
I, I wondered, I thought, oh.
When I ran it again on the fifteenth of August, it looked like there were about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of charges. That were related to these three prior periods that were just getting coded and up-to-date. And, and these, uh, financials were created, I believe, the first week of August, so we don't, it doesn't reflect that. We were just trying to get a good idea of where we were sitting year-to-date with the information that we had.
So technically speaking, you'll be about two hundred thousand. Figuring that in, that it, just because the codes are behind.
Yep, with the contractual on the net revenue side, we'll, we'll see a benefit of about two hundred and forty thousand. But then I've also got to incorporate the expense accruals.
Oh.
True up, so.
I gotcha, so that's a more of a break-even almost.
Yes, yeah, but I would say, um, I feel pretty confident that to date, we are operating ahead of break-even. But I don't have all of it finalized yet.
Were those the only two clinics that were affected by this?
Um, all of the clinics, so Dassel specialty, we do some of the specialty, but they all, um, the I Bailey group is also picking up some of the inpatient as well.
All of the clinics were affected by the transition.
Okay, they all went through this transition. I was also looking under July twenty-first, July twenty-one expenses in the lower right-hand.
Yes.
That, that was quite a jump.
There is, yep, and so in June and July, we actually see more expense and, and this is part of the true-up as well. Um, the June and July were not spread equally and accrued with May, so over May, June and July. And we also had three paid periods in July, July, so there were three larger payments.
A year that tend to have three and that can.
So we saw the uptick there.
So the net loss, we're looking at a net loss of year-to-date two hundred and fifty thousand. How does that compare with years previous?
Prior to that, um, that's a great question, so typically in the summer, we have a little bit of a lull. Um, year-to-date, it, it, it's hard to say exactly where we would fall each year, because in August.
Much better than last year.
Yeah, you know.
I mean, below the year before that, um, we're still, you know, if you remember the first quarter of this year. The clinics weren't even getting up to seeing full schedules, um, people were still not coming in. That has changed now in this, um, current June-July, so, you know, we tend to, you know, go anywhere between four, six and seven percent profit margin. So we're not quite there yet, we feel we're gonna be closer to that, um, once we true up expenses and everything, we feel that we're gonna be sitting much better.
Yeah, I'd say usually by the end of summer, we're somewhere between three and four percent, um, profit margin. And then going into the fall, that's when we do our true-up with Medicare and we usually either see a bump up or a slight bump down.
I know that when you were here last, you were talking about hiring of nurses and that was difficult, has that improved?
It's a nationwide shortage for staffing everywhere, um, and it's been, uh, it's. One reason why we're, we're sitting where we're at with the volume is we can't get people out of our ER. We can't get them off of the floor, we can't get them to places, um, not because that their beds are full, because they don't have any staff for them. So it's, um.
Staffing's been our biggest challenge.
It's been, uh, you know, it's been staffing a challenge everywhere.
Could you give us a little quick COVID update?
Uh, it's still out there.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, it's, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's not good. Um, we continue to see our testing go up, uh, we, uh, can see, uh, continue to see our monoclonal infusions. Um, I know, uh, bad fact about, uh, shortage. And at the time I responded to her, the answer was no, everything's good, we got an email today to say they're short. So now there are certain rules and regulations that they gotta do go to, um, we're actually getting people, um, from the cities wanting to come down for the infusions.
Cause they're not doing them there, they don't have the staff to be able to do them, we can't fit them in, we don't have the staff to do them, we wanna take care of our own, um, individuals. Um, you know, vaccines continue to increase, but not as much as what we'd like, um, and, um, we're just kinda waiting to see what happens with the schools starting. So we do have incident, incident command, um, weekly now, uh, and with that, we do have all the schools in the county on it. Um, just so we can be a resource for that, but it's, um, it, COVID is not what's filling the gaps. I mean, that's part of it, uh, you tend to have a lot of, um, sick individuals that waited, you know, too long to come in. Get their clinic visits, getting, that's what's happening and, and you're on top of that with staffing shortages and have a.
I'm curious, cause last night, I was just watching, I think it was Channel eleven news, and they were interviewing an administrator of a smaller hospital. Still, I, I don't remember the name of the town, but he said they had twenty, I think it was twenty beds. And nineteen were COVID people who were not vaccinated and one was a vaccinated person. His underlying message was get vaccinated.
Yeah, we're seeing that too, as, um, people come in for inpatient or unvaccinated.
But a lot of your, a lot of your bed shortage is due to the fact that you don't have people there to take care of them, so it's more of a.
As a whole, that's it, we've been actually doing pretty good, um, you know, we're, we're actually trying to increase our core staffing to. Um, because we're, we know we're sitting on patients longer, um, just because it can't get out. So we're trying to increase our core staffing, uh, which, um, we're doing okay with. You know, we, um, we know that we're challenged, um, because what's happening is supply and demand. Um, the supply's low, the demand goes high and so does the prices. Um, you know, I had, uh, reports even from, uh, Hudson City is offering four thousand dollar sign-on bonuses for CMAs. Uh, but this is something that's not a Minnesota, it's a national thing. Uh, I think Carolina, South and North Carolina was offering forty thousand dollar sign-on bonuses for our. Uh, this is across, it's, it's, uh, it, it's, it's creating its own prices.
So I think what's happening is, um, the people who are disagreeing with mandates and can afford to are walking away. I think the young people who can travel are traveling because, I mean, think about it, nearby.
You still paying two hundred and thirty bucks a.
Two hundred and thirty, so you've got nothing keeping you here. And, and then you put that into, that's where it's happening all over the country. So, yeah, COVID is an issue, but the, we cannot find anywhere to put seat, and I, like we've talked about, they come to the ER very ill. And we have nowhere to go with them because of the short staff, and I don't see that getting better any time soon. I, I think urgent care, walk-in has been helpful, cause the clinics have been also busy.
Been full, so our walking clinic has doing, been doing very well, ER's been busy. Um, but we can't even get people out of our facility, you mean, to nursing homes, uh, just because of staffing and that, so.
Same all over.
It's creating a whole different crisis, so.
Well, we talked, I know we talked a year ago already about what, you know, the backside of COVID and, and like on rescue squad. And so you were, people are not going in when they show up and checked out, and that's what we're seeing now, I mean, that lag. The severity of their cases when they come in and issues are that much more pronounced.
And it.
Require more care and you have less people to give that care and.
And I think that will continue for a while.
It will. You know, and you got people who are close to retirement, decided that maybe it's time to retire.
Yep.
Um, you know, and I think they probably would have had three or four more years locked in them, but they just, they had enough, so.
How does it work with insurance if you go to the Minna clinic? Everything rolls through.
Or urgent care, yeah.
It's the same fee schedule as, as going into the clinic here in town.
But you just don't have to make an appointment, you can.
Correct.
Well, and also you don't have to go to the emergency room, which gets very expen- hopefully.
Yeah, our goal was, uh, our goal is if it's not emergent in our ER, we would do the medical screening and then see them in urgent care. Um, just to reduce, um, the cost.
Sure.
You know.
And that's right in the front door now, the south door of the hospital, you walk in and that's your, the Minna clinic urgent.
Yep, there's a spot.
Other questions?
Other? Questions or issues to discuss?
Has there anything been precipitating with the management agreement, or is that kinda put on hold for a little bit with?
No, we're, we're continuing to move forward and know there, you know, we're continuing to talk, but nothing is.
Nothing concrete.
No.
Anything else for us today? Those were my only questions.
About our employee retention credit.
Yes.
I keep bugging you about that.
I appreciate it, so we are eligible for it, I have started pulling the data, um, I have not finalized the calculation for twenty-twenty-one yet. But I am working on it and I have also been working on our HHS funds with our auditors, so they're, they're in the loop with me, so I can make sure that we cover all our bases.
So are you eligible for anything from twenty?
That's what I know for sure, a lot of the funds that we received, the PPP, PPP funds and the HHS actually first apply into salary. And so there's a little bit of caveat there that I may be able to use, but it won't be nearly as big as what we'll see for twenty-twenty-one.
The, the link that I sent you, that was so confusing.
There's a lot of literature, yes.
Yeah, but that came right off that IRS website, so.
Yep, yep.
But I'm glad that, I'm glad we're gonna be eligible for some.
I appreciate you bringing it up.
And we did get our, our full PPP, um, taken care of, forgiven, so I assume.
It's not a liability anymore, you're cash. That's good.
I know we had talked because of COVID and everything, that we would be so terribly in debt by the end of the year. Now we're into September of a year basically after the COVID year, how is that looking?
Well, things have, things have projected very well for us, so one of the biggest, let me see, wins is. It, we've, we've seen some of these funds forgiven, so the biggest liabilities that we had, so the HHS, the PPP funds. Um, and now we're working through recognizing that, but, um, in addition to our initial projections. So when we, we think back to March and April, that's when we were facing these, the uncertainty of whether or not we were going to have a stay. Today to stop surgeries, and surgeries feed into every area of our hospital, and so our initial projections, we're looking. If we were not able to continue a surgery for a good portion of the year, that's, that is when it becomes a huge liability for us, because.
And I can tell you that there's talks out there already on having that happen again, that, uh, that to stop. Um, so Minnesota Hospital Associations have been pushing back to the state health department, right now, the good thing is there's no emergency powers. So they don't, they, they can only recommend a suggestion, um, but there is talks out there.
So maintaining our ability to do surgeries has really pushed us out of that hole that we were kind of worried about being in. That first quarter of twenty-twenty-one, and now we're, we've got our eye on making sure we're breaking even. So it's been a slow process, I don't know, Phil, but, um, where we initially projected with the nine million dollar loss. That being able to do surgeries again really brought us out of that, so we hope that we are not motivated in that way.
Any other questions? Or hospital folks, any other things?
You look too smiley though, I feel like we should do one more.
Um, you know, the staff have been working hard, little guys, I mean, knowing that they're, they're keeping patients that they normally don't keep. And, and they're doing a great job with them, our providers are doing a great job, uh, with it also, and, uh, yeah, hats off to them. They've, they've been doing a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I know.
All right, Ryan?
It'll be a credit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right, Cruz County Sheriff, just a couple items for you this morning, um, do you want me to do the hirings together, they're both part-time. Yeah, that works. Okay, so.
Weekend, they're on the same sheet here, folks are following along.
Yep, so we have two part-time deputy positions, um, so the two hirings are Jordan Lemke and Taylor Schimmelman. Both are, would be at level nine DS step one, which is twenty-five eighty-eight an hour, and both would be effective Sep- September fifteenth, um, pending their physical exam.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of Taylor Schimmelman and Jordan Lemke as part-time deputies effective September fifteenth. Pending physical examination.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, I probably shouldn't even ask this, if they were in Stearns County, what would that level of pay be?
I don't know Stearns County, they're significantly higher.
They are, everybody around us significantly higher.
Um, Candy, Stearns and Wright are significantly higher. Um, Candy, Stearns, and Wright are significantly higher. I don't know where Renville and Claude are.
They're significantly larger, aren't they?
Both counties. Just curious, this two.
I, I just can't believe you said that. I'm kidding.
No, you're not.
That's twice now, Paul. First, the twins to that poor lady there, she grew up ready to have a kid. Pull that out there. That's a bigger faux pas than this one. It's, it's a legitimate question. And I like the comparisons to be in counties our size and our location, not, not Candy, Ohio.
More driving, just as if they lived here, could they drive someplace? That's why.
Renville would probably be a better comparison.
Yeah, Renville's a little higher than us. It does create an issue because we, I have a couple deputies right now who are looking for other jobs. They're looking at the metro. So everybody assumed there'd be a mass exodus out of the metro and we've had people applying for us, which never happened, um, because of the pay cut. But now there's, um, it's going the other way because they're shorthanded in the cities. Within a couple of years, you can make twenty dollars more an hour, plus now they're kicking in hiring bonuses down there. So I have deputies who are looking back that way. Um, because of the, the amount of money that they can make if they go that way, so.
But aren't they talking about disbanding the police department? Isn't that coming up for a vote? I was just hearing about that on.
Minneapolis, yeah.
Yeah, scary.
Why would we hire two part-time and not one full-time?
Um, so our full-time staff, we're, we are actually at full staff for full-time. Um, so the part-time people, part-time people we hire have full-time jobs elsewhere and they just fill in for, um, sick time, vacation time, and things like that. Um, so we have, I think right now, this will put us at four or five part-time deputies.
Are they limited to number of hours per pay period?
Not necessarily. Um, so ideally I'd like to have five to eight because then get them to backfill. Right now, even though we're at full staff and full-time staff, we have people out of medical and we're actually hurting pretty bad. So the part-timers fill in those spots and it's not another spot and it's not, you know, if we could add full-time, it would be great, but we're not at that position.
And it's kind of like the part-time snowplow drivers. You can, we had a, you had a list of many, many people, I think, and when you call, they don't come. So why have the list, you know?
Do we provide benefits to part-time?
They get sick and vacation, prorated to how much they work.
We don't provide medical or those sorts of things to part-time?
Right.
Is there a personal cost to them to stay certified? As a, as, you know, do they have to pay recertification of anything?
No. So most of the, most of our part-time people that we hire are associated with another agency. And that primary agency is responsible for their license. So in Meeker County, we pay for the full-time license. So if somebody here was full-time and they took a job elsewhere, part-time, there's no incurred costs to them.
I see the only negative impact of hiring these is, uh, in two weeks, I'm gonna be late for the meeting.
I miss that.
Just drive slower. Start out earlier.
Except you're alive.
I'm on chivaline time, that never works.
You might not have wanted to mention that.
No.
Yeah, well, I'm always transparent anyway, so.
I watch over those troopers.
Yeah, I know.
Adam Jericho will question.
Any other, so here we go. Okay, hearing no further discussion, we will take the vote on the two, um, hiring of part-time deputies. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for both carries.
Hillary, I might have just to receive or accept a donation from a minimum of five hundred dollars.
Cheryl makes a motion to approve it.
Second.
Program donation of five hundred.
Any discussion?
Thank you to that person. Is this an anonymous?
It's from the VFW.
Okay, thank you to the VFW.
Very good. Very good.
Can I ask a quick question that I've been forgetting? Can I get the backstory on the armored vehicle? I didn't even know we had one. I probably should have known that one, but where did it come from?
That came through the federal, um, surplus program. So the cost of the vehicle, there was no cost of the vehicle. The cost is to get the thing road-ready and upgraded to, to be used.
So, uh, not, big donations anonymous is that we have no way of knowing who's making those donations. I mean, we've had twenty thousand dollars in donations for that and I.
Correct.
I've had questions from the public about that. So it's not public information.
I always thought an anonymous donation.
I know, but I think because it's county, I understand, except it's county and I get questions, so. Like number one was when did, when and where did we get an armored vehicle? And I said, I think it was up from the federal government program. And then the second questions were where are we getting all the money, so.
So part of the money was budgeted, I think fifteen thousand dollars was budgeted when we got the vehicle. Um, um, we went in and, because we, and the reason we budgeted fifteen thousand because Wilmer got one and it cost them fifteen thousand. So when we went in, price of steel, the price of everything went up. So we were in thirty thousand plus land. Um, so an employee knows a couple of people, um, that he went and talked to who supported that. And, and so there was two separate donations, each for ten thousand dollars.
From two separate people.
Right.
Thank you. I'd just like to have some type of an answer when I get asked.
And you can certainly send it my way too, they can.
I'll do that. I actually did tell one guy to call you, but doesn't always work. My, my other question quickly is, we have a dispatch supervisor now.
Correct.
Does she, um, help handle dispatch, she or he? I can't remember which we hired, when it's busy.
Yes.
So are we looking to man two people in dispatch every shift?
We don't have the staff to do that.
Are you interested in having the staff to do that?
I would love to be able to do that, but we don't have the staff to do that.
But is that, I guess my question is, is that something that was the goal or? Are we, I've never heard this discussion until today, so I understood when we hired the dispatch supervisor, it was to cover some of these times when it got busy.
Right.
So today we heard about that. It doesn't sound like that's happening or it isn't enough or?
So I, I guess I don't know what you were told, but the dispatch supervisor covers, um, so if somebody calls in sick, they're gonna cover that. They will cover shortfalls during the day, but the dispatch supervisor is not in that schedule. So where we don't have two people are, um, overnights from two to six or seven AM, depending on the schedule. We don't have a second dispatcher on weekend day shifts, um, when the supervisor is not working. So every other weekend, we would be short. And then during the week, there are shortfalls during the day when the supervisor, when the supervisor is not working, but works on the weekend. So we would need another staff person to do twenty-four seven, at least one more staff person to twenty-four seven, two dispatchers and dispatch at all times.
Has that ever been put in the budget? Because I'm hearing in the background that it was put in the budget years ago and was approved by the board and I never recall that being put in the budget.
So there was an eighth dispatcher approved, um.
This was before you.
Before I became sheriff.
It's been before me too.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I don't know why the eighth dispatcher was never hired, but that person wasn't ever hired. I, I don't know the backstory behind that. So that was a long time ago, at least back to oh-eight, oh-nine, ten, somewhere in there.
Are we just struggling to keep dispatchers right now just because of the employment atmosphere and money or, or, or is it just a normal struggle?
Um, I, we're not alone in that. Um, so we lost two dispatchers to Stearns County because of pay and one specifically said, because I will not work at night alone. So she took that job over this job. Um, we are full staff in dispatch as far as full-time staffing. And we have a dedicated, um, twenty-hour-a-week part-time person, although we don't have one person working at twenty hours, um, we haven't been able to staff that. We're not fully staffed because the full-time person hired is still in training. So once that person gets off of training and is on their own, which should be next week if I remember right, that should alleviate some of that. But we're still gonna have areas where we only have one dispatcher on at a time. So we don't have staffing to cover twenty-four seven.
So in order to get two dispatchers at, at all times, you would need one full-time employee?
At least one.
At least one?
Yep.
I mean, you can't fill it in any part-time roles because it's a full-time amount of time that they need to, that void to fill the two, the one, the two, right?
Well, yeah, we, we could, I mean, we could staff, you could take part-timers and staff at that position. But with the schedule, the way the schedule is set up, there is enough, if you wanna cover two people all time, at all times, there's more than forty hours a week that's, that where somebody's sitting there alone. So you would have to staff that. Another person would completely staff that.
Is it a problem? I mean, do you see it as a problem or why has it not been brought up before? Or is it not a high priority for you as far as the sheriff department? What, what's your take on it?
Um, so, well, there's a couple, there's a couple of things with that. So my, the temperature of the board that I've felt for the past couple of years is we're not adding staff. And that would be adding staff and I'm just not willing to have that way when we got other things going on. Um, I think there's a couple of things going on as well. Overall staffing is, um, we have patrol deputies who are on alone and, and there's pushback. We shouldn't be alone anymore. You have dispatchers who are alone and there's pushback. We shouldn't be alone anymore. Um, and years ago, you could get by with one person. And now we're to the point where we can't get by with one person. Um, you know, as time goes, we just added a deputy last year, two years ago. So we have another deputy out there, um, who are still short, but we can't staff twenty-four seven, two people. And it's the same, it's the same thing on the road as it is in dispatch, is that we just don't have the staff to do it. And you, and I don't know that adding just one is gonna completely do it, so you're looking at multiple staff.
Well, I would, Marlene was in and had some public comments this morning.
Oh, okay.
And, and just talking about, uh, losing dispatchers to other counties and things like that and talented. And I, and I was in and talking to Ryan last week because one of the dispatchers that we lost is very talented. She's in a lot of exam lengths and I know her husband well and, um, and one of their main issues, I think, was because we have dispatchers on a long certain times of the shifts and they, that was troublesome for them. So I mean, that is an issue that we're gonna have to at least uncover a little bit, see what we can do to address it.
I realize the need for dispatching is unpredictable, but I have to assume that the way you've got your sched- schedule set up, when they are alone, it would be your least.
Correct.
Demand, periods, so.
How much are calls up?
Um, so the last I looked was a couple of months ago and we were up, um, just over five percent from two thousand nineteen. I didn't even look at twenty twenty because it was so low. So if you look historically since about two thousand fifteen, there's been a steady increase of three to five percent every year, with the exception of last year. So there's been a steady increase in our call load every year.
Well, I think it has, the older board, I think we did have some budget issues with keeping on hiring people because it never goes away. And it's no secret that I was opposed to a dispatch supervisor. I never heard it, I heard that there was gonna be a lot of filling in with the dispatch supervisor. And I don't know if that's happening or not.
She does. Um, right now she's spending most of her time doing training.
Doing what?
Training.
So that's another gap, right? Robin retired and, um, Paul retired. So we've had some retirements and it takes a while to train. Anybody can come to public comments, but I just not sure that, you know. I haven't heard about this issue that we want two people dispatching all the time. So I will wait to hear from you, but I would like to get some more information on counties our size and number of calls because we just grow and grow and grow, so. That's not always the answer. Maybe there's a more efficient way to do things. Maybe it's becau- maybe everybody who, because we have that shortage of staff, that, uh, the regular dispatchers are feeling pressure, I would certainly understand that. Right?
Right.
Then we put some training.
Yep.
And then they leave. And what's the training program about five months?
Um, we're just, we're just depending on if they've had any experience. Somebody brand new, it, it's up to six months to get them fully acclimated and understand it. The biggest issue in dispatch, um, which we've hired people and they think, well, I can do this, is, um, it's beyond multitasking. It's being able to, to hear and understand something in their earpiece about what's on the radio or what's happening, while at the same time having this conversation. So you, you're actually, you're having dual conversations and be able to keep track of that. Because new dispatchers come in, they can't understand that concept and they focus on one or the other, which we all do. It's not natural to focus on both, but you have to focus on the radio traffic while you're talking to somebody in that emergency. Because you have to know what the EMS or law enforcement is doing while you're talking to the victim or the person reporting. And people just, that's the most difficult thing is to get them.
I'm sure I couldn't do it. There's no way I could sit in there and, I couldn't do it. And so I'm sure you go through candidates and they can't do it. That's, anyway. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Did we?
No, we did not.
We have a motion and a second we've been discussing.
I thought we did follow.
Nope, we have.
The discussion.
Just this last one.
My fault again.
We have on, on the floor here the five hundred dollar donation. Any additional discussion or questions on the motion?
A lot of work for five hundred bucks, Brian.
Yeah.
We will take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Five hundred bucks. You're welcome.
Those should be the easiest motions, I'd say.
Good morning, Paul. You can vouch me for running social services. I, I don't have five hundred dollars.
Oh, boy.
We're hoping that Paul's standing described his vote as honoring.
I know I missed that. I'm just gonna go assume positive intent here. Um, good morning. The first order of business I have for you is to request to approve, um, the ability to post and recruit for a catty social worker position, uh, C forty-one. This has been reviewed by the Personnel Committee. Um, and, uh, we do have this in our budget this year already, um, so it is a budgeted position. Um, the position actually is fully funded by our catty waiver program. We're seeking this position, um, because we've see in our aggregate budget about two million dollars that we have not been able to access because of, um, not having enough workers. But also, um, to really start developing some community-based support services here in our community. It's nice to have the money, but you also have to have the services. We do have the number of individuals and, and it continues to grow that would potentially be access, um, eligible to access this funding mechanism, um, primarily with our children's mental health, um, folks. Um, we're seeing that a number of individuals actually go out, um, out of home placement because of some, uh, mental health issue or behavioral health issue. Um, we do pick up the cost of, of that as a county and believe that there are services and supports that could potentially divert that from occurring. But also, um, when children go into out-of-home placement, they learn skills and have difficulties in transferring those skills back into the community and looking at services to be able to support them in doing so. Um, and also, um, hopefully support families as well. But that's just a piece of the position. It's also focusing on serving individuals that have, adults that have mental health issues and concerns as well. And they're eligible for these funding, uh, mechanisms.
Do we currently have a person that does this?
We have one person right now. We have two other individuals that are working in the adult mental health world that, um, do catty services. Um, but the one individual just focuses on, on persons with disabilities and we're seeing that we're seeing, uh, significant growth in that area as well.
So this new position, it would actually be a new position? So this new position, it would actually be a new position that would just do the caddy, but that would be paid for by this fund?
Correct.
Is that, is this a continuing fund, or is it a one-year deal, or?
It's a solid fund. It's been around since nineteen ninety-two. It's based on, on medical assistance, and it's a federal waiver of institutional level of care. Um, looking at our budgets of, since I've been here, we have been underutilizing this for quite some time. Um, we've been leaving about two million dollars on the table since I've been here. Looking back previously to my involvement here, they've been leaving that amount of money on the table for about eight years now. Um, it's a solid funding mechanism, um, based off Medicaid. It's a state and federal funding mechanism.
So we would take on a person here in Mecrid. They would facilitate this caddy. It would be paid for by those funds. Does that include benefits and retirement?
Yes. Yes. We actually make, I hate to say it, it's tax dollars. We offset our levy by the dollars that we receive for this position. It costs us roughly eighty-six dollars. That's a full boat position, taxes and benefits for an individual. We bring in about a hundred and eight dollars an hour underneath this funding mechanism for that person's time.
Madam Chair, move to approve the request to recruit full-time social worker for the caddy waiver program, Level C forty-one.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second Madam Chair.
Do we have any discussion?
I have only one question. How do you recruit this person? I mean, what, what tool or?
Well, we used to use merit system, and I'm glad we're not merit system now. We have a robust HR department. And so I believe that she uses, uh, um, Indeed to, to get the word out there, but we also put information, um, I believe, on, on AMC's website. We also have another couple of other websites that folks tend to look to when they're, um, attempting to get into, uh, this level of social position. We've been very successful as a plate with our recruiting. Um, uh, most of our interviews, um, we're getting at least, um, seven to eight people applying for each position. Of that seven to eight, we're finding, um, usually two to three qualified candidates. We've been seeing, uh, um, that we've been competitive in that area, uh, so.
Potential new people moving into the community?
I would hope.
Potential new taxpayers. We like it.
My gosh, we're really, we're really looking for reasons to hire people.
Well, well, the, the one thing that's nice about this funding mechanism is it has a broad benefit. Anytime that you look at some of the figures, and they vacillate when you bring medical assistance dollars into the community. That it's a, it used to be a one dollar spent on Medicaid, you generate ten dollar revenue. It's right around one or six. Now, I believe, is the last figure I've seen. So it does have some economic, uh, impact in the community. Also, these services are not only, um, available to the individuals based on this funding mechanism, but it's, uh, it's kind of some acre funding for these types of services. So if there were individuals that had other needs, um, or other funding mechanisms through private health insurance, they may be able to access these as well, but this provides that critical mass and that support funding to make those available.
What if the funding goes away?
We had this discussion, and, and it's gonna be challenging for me to, to articulate this in a way that's gonna make, uh, that, that's gonna be digestible in the amount of time that we have available.
Holy crap. What did you just say? They can have to use the restroom, though.
He said, "We won't be done before lunch."
Yeah.
The, the, the funding mechanism has, is, is very solid. If it goes away, really what we're looking at is significant retooling of all Medicaid. Medicaid really, for the most part, is everything that we do. In social services, i- it, it, it's, would be a significant, uh, upheaval of, of basically the, uh, uh, medical payment system in the United States.
What happens to the person who is currently doing these responsibilities now?
I don't understand that. They would continue to do those responsibilities. This is, this is volume build. Yep, and with the children's mental health, this is a new area of, uh, it's not a new area of business. It's an area of business that we're, we're trying to get into more of because it's such a fault, solid funding mechanism, that we're hypothesizing that we will use this to reduce some of our local, um, levy mandates for the care of children in mental health by accessing these funds instead. Now, granted, it's all tax dollars, but it's trying to access from that broader pool of federal and state tax dollars, um, and not local levy dollars.
Any additional questions or discussion?
Was it unanimous in personnel?
Well.
Uh-huh. It was actually, this one was unanimous because of the funding, and we were assured that if the funding would, went away, we would have a lot larger problems, so.
It was a very robust conversation.
I bet it was.
Yeah, and, and, and some documentation back and forth. It was very robust. Um, and it, it, the, the, Commissioner Bredson, the, the, the question about the funding mechanism being secure was really an area that was, uh, I think, the most significant.
Sure.
Um, to describe, and, and really kind of a, a, a strong challenge from the Personnel Committee and myself to kind of demonstrate how that looks and how that works. That's kind of why I was saying, I don't know if we have enough time to package it here today because it, it, it was, I think, very good. And really what it helped me understand also is, is where I need to be communicating with the board more about our funding mechanisms, um, so that you have that general understanding, baseline of understanding to, to really get a feel for, for where I'm looking at this as a strong funding mechanism, so.
Very good. Any other questions on the motion that we have before us? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next order of business I have before you, from asking for more money, spending more money. Are our accounts payable?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have before us a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? We get a chance to look over the accounts payable.
Paul, I just had a question. Lutheran, uh, Lutheran Social Services, um, there's multiple invoices. Uh, just, can you give like a brief, not till lunch explanation? Kind of our interaction with.
We interact with them on a, on a lot of different levels, um, for a number of different services. Um, we use them for some of our, um, contract guardianship. Um, they also have, uh, um, foster care homes and residential care settings. Um, we also use them for some of our children's mental health services as well.
All right, I just, and, and the bill that just says invoice, and I was just curious what, kind of what.
Yeah.
Multitude of things we did with them. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was just a Catholic Protestant.
Yeah. No, I think we, we, we do use different, different areas.
Darn German Catholics.
Yeah, I know. We're like going Lutheran, what about the Catholics?
Is the Catholic Charities bill on this one? You got PFFs though.
Any additional comments, questions, or snide remarks?
I'm gonna refrain for a while. I think I used up my allotment.
You are gonna cut you off. This mic is next, Gar. Very good. If I hear no additional questions or discussion, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Very helpful.
Thanks, Paul.
And we have Barb.
Okay, Bar Block County Auditor. And the first item I have on the agenda is the classification of forfeited lands. And let me just give you a little background, and I did lay in front of, um, both the forms. The forms will be signed by all of you, including Andrew, when we're done. And part of that is because of the tenure title requirements that we have to prove that we've made all the different steps, and so we use that format. Works really well. So each time I have taxed forfeited property, we need to classify that before other steps can be taken to return that to the tax rolls. Um, if a state agency or a government subdivision wants to preserve the right to request a purchase or acquisition of the property, they may do that in written requests also at this point, and then the parcel would be withheld from sale. And I think some of you were, were aware that we did that with the property that's to the east of the Family Services Building. Uh, City Council or Town Board has sixty days from the receipt of this written request to make a response. And if no response is received, then the sale is deemed to be approved. So if I don't receive a response, and sometimes cities and townships don't respond on purpose, then it will go forward after sixty days and will be, um, before you diset the forfeited property sale. Our office is also requiring, um, or there's requirements with the DNR, and we forward those for review. So many steps take place before I can come before you with the official sale, which at this point, looking at the dates, I believe I would be scheduling that into January for those that are looking, um, for that particular information. Uh, just a tiny bit of, um, updates on the different parcels so that you have some idea of what we have. Um, in the first one, in Act and Township, I have one acre, and it is a landlocked piece. Landlocked means that I can't do public sale. I need to do by bid. So we'll be working with those landowners that, uh, touch that particular property. Uh, the City of Cosmas, I have it boarded by the city and the DNR, and I certainly do believe that, um, either the DNR and/or the city will, um, refrain that one from being a forfeit sale or an option. Um, the City of Dassel, there's, uh, wetland pieces that have been on the books since prior to nineteen ninety-eight, and then all the different reviews, and when it was told that it could be brought to sale, I believe we have not phoned an exchange process, et cetera, and we will be offering them. They will have to offer as one parcel, so by one, or we would create a landlocked situation there as well, and that would not be favorable. And the last one is a very small piece. We his- historically looked back to see what could have happened and why it doesn't really show it was leased and whatever. Sixty by, um, fifty foot, and that is also landlocked in the City of Litchfield, so that will be a private sale when they come back. So what I'm asking you to do today is to approve these certificates of county's classification and the notices that will be going to each of these, um, particular jurisdictions. And by doing that, the format will be in front of both to pass on, so each of you signs that, and that will be the retention that we have showing that we made these steps for, uh, future title search and other different situations with land, forfeit land. There's many steps that we have to take, and, um, they have to be well documented.
And we can take all of these in one motion?
Very correct.
The way it's printed here.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the certificates of county board classification for forfeited lands for parcels. There are six parcels. Uh, numbers are listed, uh, a couple of times in this, uh, RBA, so, RBA.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have the motion. It has been seconded. Any further discussion? Questions for Barb? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the second item that I have before you. We have several of our ditch, individual ditch accounts that have, again, um, gone into the red primarily because of major amount of work and/or the redetermination that has happened on a few of them. So my request today is to increase the loan between the ditch fund and the revenue fund by an amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at two percent interest. This will, I will be coming back shortly with, uh, the levy, hopefully early November. And at that time, we do have some buffer strips and easements that'll need to be paid, and how that offset and the collection happens so that we don't, uh, create a negative in the fund. By year end, I'll likely be doing some more short term. At this point, this was my critical area to bring that fund into positive.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the loan from General Revenue Fund to Ditch Fund in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars at two percent interest.
I'll second.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion?
I see the vast majority is all county ditches instead of judicial this time.
Yes, they are county, and a primary reason for that, that redetermination on one is a judicial, that that's a very small amount, is that larger amount of work on the one, and those two redeterminations are really pulling those funds down.
Any additional discussion? Any questions for Barb? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The payables that were sent out on Friday.
Motion, make a motion to approve payables.
I'll second that one.
Questions? Any discussion? On the payables? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Greg.
Morning.
Good morning.
Eric Schultz, Land Use Director. Good morning. I got one item for the board. And that is to appoint a policy committee member and an alternate for the planning process to South Fork of the Coral River, one watershed, one planned in Area Thirteen. Remember back in July, uh, we, you voted and signed to be a part of the memorandum agreement for this watershed, Area Thirteen. Now, they have, uh, they've been approved for some grant money, so now we need somebody from the board and an alternate to approve actions of the planning committee and approve payment, from invoices for the projects that they're, they're going to be approving.
Where do the names come from for potential candidates for this?
I believe it's just from your board.
It's on the website where.
I'd appreciate it if you pointed at me when you said.
Just had one of those meetings. Do not point at me.
This policy committee is made of commissioners from the representative county, so.
They put forth.
No, it's, it, it's among the five of you.
There's one.
It's up, it's up to you guys.
Each of those counties will have one commissioner on it.
Yes.
A primary and alternate.
Right.
Two, four, six, eight, nine counties, or eight counties.
So is there a volunteer or what?
Which, is it the blue disk itself, right? So it's the.
It's the green.
It's the green.
The green area.
It's above the blue. Yeah, it's that little strip of green, between the green and the blue. It's only occupied twelve percent of that Area Thirteen. Mecrid County does.
I hate to say anything, but I believe that green, uh, is mostly residing in District Three.
Oh, you smile.
Yeah, I'm like, thank goodness. What am I again? What am I, anyway? Okay. Who's District Three, Paul?
So if you're looking for a volunteer, because it is, does encompass most of my area.
I nominate Paul Johnson.
Second their motion?
We, we also do need an alternate as well.
I nominate Steve for the alternate. So Paul and Steve, is it?
And we're talking the green area, right?
Yes.
So those are the only, you would only need two individuals and one, they have to come from the board?
Yes, correct.
Is there a term, a length of term with a?
I don't know that.
One year, five year, ten year?
Be a term.
Something about death and.
Exactly. Tell death or non-running county part.
I, I believe that we could update this annually when we did the rest of our committee assignments.
Because this is just for twenty twenty-two projects that they're going to fund for.
So it'd probably be an annual discussion then?
Could be, I'm not exactly sure.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? We have a motion, it has been seconded.
Who seconded? We don't have a second?
We don't have a second yet?
Oh, I was quick. I think Beth made a motion, I think you seconded it.
Oh, did you?
I think Julie did.
Okay. Sorry.
She was afraid we'd put her name in. Yeah, exactly. Wait a minute, no.
Here we go.
I stand corrected.
Just so you know, although Steve and I volunteered, we may vote against this particular.
You're gonna be able. We still got the votes, Paul.
We're good. Quickly, we will take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Paul and Steve, thank you very much. That was great.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is to me. So the first item I have before you today is a continuation of the discussion that we had at our last work session about our annual budget. In a brief summary of where we're at as of today, the preliminary budget includes thirty-six million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars in total expenditures, which equates to a three and a half percent increase over the twenty twenty-one adopted budget. And this also includes five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars in American Rescue Plan funds. In order to fund this budget, we have included a two point five nine percent increase in the property tax levy. However, we do have opportunities to reduce that amount through the use of fund balance, the ARP funds or a combination of the two. As we look through the tables on here, we do have a a list of notable items that we discussed at our work session. And just very briefly highlighting a number of them, we have some major capital purchases such as purchase of new vehicles for our Public Works Department, Sheriff's Office, Land Use Department, and Maintenance Department. In our Social Services Department, we have increase in the budget for guardianships as well as in-home family support in order to increase and improve on those services. We have a number of building projects which we have currently funded through fund balance for both the, and, I'm sorry, and also partially through the levy for Family Services Center as well as the Courthouse and Law Enforcement Center. We also have a number of other purchases, including replacement of armor radios as part of a replacement program, purchase of a use-of-force simulator for the Sheriff's Office, body and taser camera maintenance, moving those to a hosted service, as well as an increase in our pavement maintenance operation. We do have some significant personnel changes that are currently included in the budget. With that is four new positions. Two of them are heavy equipment operators in the Public Works Department. One is a social worker, working on the Min Choices Program. And then last is a network administrator for our Information Technology Department. We also have a part-time admin clerk position that's recommended to be moved to a full-time admin clerk position. We also have seven reclassifications in multiple departments across the board. And then lastly, there's the, the American Rescue Plan. We have a number of projects included in the twenty twenty-two budget. As I mentioned, there's five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars that's currently in twenty twenty-two. The major chunk of that is the facility remodel design, which is the work that we've discussed here at the Courthouse and the Family Services Center. Admittedly, the number that's on here is, is a significant estimate and will be refined as we move through the concept phase, which we're working on finalizing the contract for right now. We also have a number of information technology improvements, including firewall replacement, improving our technology in our meeting room down in the community rooms, our annual replacement for computer monitors, replacing switches here at the Courthouse, as well as improving our multi-factor authentication program, scanning our vital records books, which are currently housed in the Treasurer's Office. Those are the items that are, I apologize, let me back up. One other item that we have in the budget right now is the central air conditioning for the Housing Redevelopment Authority. They have some single-family homes that they want to install central air in. So those are the items that we have included in the budget. We have a number of items that could potentially be included in the budget as well, which include countywide EMS paging and radio repeater systems as requested by the Sheriff's Office. Assistant to County Attorney is requested by a County Attorney's Office to help with the backlog of cases. Touchless communication system, which was requested by the Mica Memorial Hospital. Workforce, workforce development program is requested by the EDA. ProWorks, which is another agency that we work with, just submitted a request at the end of last week for two thousand dollars for new fencing. So as we add all of that up, assuming everything that, if everything that's currently undetermined becomes allocated, we would have allocated about one point six million dollars of the four and a half million of ARP funds that are available to the county with two, two point eight million dollars that, that still remains that could be allocated. So as we talk about the budget, there's a couple of items that I'm hoping for discussion on. First off is overall, as you've had a chance to, you know, think about this over the last couple of weeks and review these documents, are there any changes that the board would like to see? When we look at the property tax levy, what percentage would you like to see that at? And in order to get to that percentage, what strategy would you like us to use? Would you like us to use fund balance out of our general revenue fund or American Rescue Plan dollars? And then looking at that two-year plan for the ARP, what are our thoughts on the projects that we have currently included and those that are currently undetermined? How would we like to move forward with that? So that's the direction I'm looking for today.
Today, correct me if I'm wrong. We're gonna be passing the motion that just adopts the preliminary budget, nothing is finalized.
Correct. So we would also look for a motion to adopt the preliminary budget and levy. And then, but in order for us to move to that next part where we can have a final budget, I need direction on how you'd like us to move forward.
However, we can go down after, if we vote on this, we can go down but not up.
Correct. On the levy, yes. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
So would you like to get that out of the, that motion out of the way first?
Sure.
Then I would move to set the preliminary twenty twenty-two net levy at fifteen million, nine seventeen, two two three, which represents a two point five nine percent increase over the twenty twenty-one.
Also, I got that motion, Madam Chair.
Now, as I read this motion as printed on our document, there is an additional paragraph below that.
That would be a second motion at a later time if that's the desire of the.
Okay, so the only thing that we are currently discussing is the first line.
Correct.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
One thing, I had one item, but a couple times over, that has been kind of a broad discussion through EDA is a hundred and fifty thousand, that is in there. That was basically a number that the EDA had to guesstimate what we might need or utilize moving forward. So of ARP funds, ARP funds, so that number is speculative. I mean, that's not a, I mean, we don't know that we need to do something for a hundred and fifty thousand or purchase something. That's, that's a number we might utilize to try and help with some training for, to help train and retain workers with businesses, some sort of business planning versus we're not looking at any business funding like we had every time, so. That's where that number, we had to kind of come up with a guesstimate.
So you're basically saying you'd like authorization for use to be determined not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand?
I just want to make sure that the board.
That's really not part of the motion at all, though.
Yeah, I want.
He, he's just saying in general that we just threw a number out there and hopefully that's lower. Because it, I mean, I'm in my mind, I'm sorry, I should speak for myself.
We don't have a solid.
There's no game plan yet.
But I think Andrew coordinated at least in the conversation, or what, if you need a number, what would that number look like?
And, and with the Budget Committee, what we had discussed was holding off on approving anything in the budget for that until a program is developed.
So if I have questions on appropriations that I disagree with, is that gonna, should that be the discussion before this vote on the levy or isn't it gonna?
What I would suggest is, I mean, you, you all can decide how you want to go forward. I would suggest voting on the levy and then we can have a broader discussion about the budget.
But that isn't gonna mean that I can't increase an appropriation, that's my question.
Correct, yeah, we have, a- as I've mentioned, we have a variety of options to make adjustments.
So we can do more out of the revenue, okay.
We will basically line item discuss this at another time.
The intention is to have a discussion about the levy today.
So Julie, we can pass two point five nine today and we can go down, but we can't go back up. So if you, if you want to go up, I wouldn't vote for the two point five nine today. Am I saying that right?
Correct.
This is, the two point five nine would be max.
It's gonna be, that's the most it can be.
But if you want an additional appropriation, then you have to find somewhere where we reduce it or take from the general fund.
Right. That's why I'm asking if this is the proper vote at this time, or if we should discuss that first. But I'm fine to vote on the two point five nine, but I have some questions, so.
And the reason I say that is because from what I've heard from our previous discussions is that two point five nine is not the number we want to finish at. We want to finish below that, and so we're gonna make adjustments, spending either out of fund balance or ARP. So that's why I'm confident if we make some minor changes to the appropriations or anywhere else in the budget, that we'll be able to make it work.
And we're gonna have those discussions later or today or not at all?
We can have that discussion today.
This just caps us.
Yep, it puts the ceiling on it. Yep, we're not going to go over this. Hopefully under. Any additional discussion or questions on the motion at hand? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So now I would suggest discussing those specific items in the budget. And then I think ultimately where I would like some direction today is, is there a consensus as far as a final percentage for the levy? And what strategy would you like us to use to get to that? Is it using some of our excess fund balance, of which as you recall, we have three to five million dollars of? Or is it using ARP funds, which we have the four and a half million dollars of and we need to obligate by the end of twenty twenty-four?
You know, what, two years, three years to do that?
Three and a half years, I should.
So with, with the, with the American Rescue money, we can do that every month if something comes up? Or it, so in other words, we can just, like we did before with the money, we approve so many items or not?
Yeah, so what I.
It's not a total package thing.
Correct. Wha- what I would intend to do is because we have the, the time to do it, unlike with the CARES dollars, is that we budget for projects and then do it as part of the budget process.
We have a lot of time.
Which is why we have the five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of projects in the budget right now. We have some other, we have three other requests from, or, sorry, several requests from four different groups who I think could use some of that money in twenty twenty-one, some could use that money in twenty twenty-two. And so I think a couple of those items, we may want to move on sooner rather than later.
You'll bring those forward, you will know it there.
So two of them we have in here right now, one is those AC units for the Housing Redevelopment Authority. The other is reimbursing the hospital for vaccination expenses in the amount of a hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. So those are items that we could move forward with a motion on today to get those moving. Or we could hold off on that and do it as part of the budget next year.
I think the HRA would like to get their air conditioning in, I sit on that committee, so. I'm fine, I'm fine with both of them, for sure, the air conditioners though. Because I'm sure they're probably on a list like everybody else to get anything. So I don't know what other.
The whole intent of the hospitals, the whole intent of the ARP is to provide that kind of money for the hospitals. That's why we approved it or whatever.
I think we discussed it and works at those two items, seem to be kind of consensus items. The air conditioners were, they want to coordinate that with some furnace replacement.
Yep.
Furnace upgrades, if you will, and sort of looking to get that kind of, get that ball rolling. And they, they brought that up, we did not fund that through CARES, that was something they requested through CARES.
Yeah, I remember that, because of the furnaces and, right?
Yeah, they were trying to partner up with.
Well, I'm sure if they're gonna, there's probably a shortage of air conditioners, so they probably got to get on an order list.
That's my guess.
Yeah, it could take them a year to get that done.
And if we do the hundred thousand for the hospital, that does not mean that in the future the communication system is out of mix.
Correct.
So I would make a motion that we do the one hundred thousand, five hundred for the vaccination clinic reimbursement. And the, is it twenty-eight thousand for the HRA central air conditioning? And we do that now?
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Cory, would you read that motion for us?
Well, I'm just gonna read it off the paper here because. Okay, so Beth is moving to approve the hundred thousand, five hundred for the Mica County Hospital for the vaccination clinic expense reimbursement, and the twenty-eight thousand for Mica County HRA for central air conditioning from the American Rescue Plan funds.
So I have a question. Like the twenty-eight thousand for HRA now, do we just give them, cut them a check for twenty-eight? Or do they have to provide an invoice? Or how does that work?
Chair?
In the past, we cut the check for, that's how we did the CARES. If you want to do it different for this, but that's what we did before is we, we, we cut them the check. Once it was approved, then it was.
I mean, I think that's the way we'd, that's fine with me.
I was just curious how we did it.
I didn't know legally if we had to, by guideline, we had to do it differently, but I don't think so.
Yeah, because when they come in to make the request, that's kind of when they present their dollar amount and why they feel they need that amount. So that's what we base the total on then, and then we pay it from that if it's approved.
So then, talking about the, the budget as a whole, like I said, the other direction I'm looking for today is, do we have a consensus as far as a percentage for levy?
We, we didn't vote on that yet.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry.
No, actually, we had the levy on the floor and then I got into this other stuff, right? So did we vote on the?
What did I know?
That's done, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
The one that we're working on now is the hospital.
The allocation?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, the rescue money, okay, sorry.
Any additional questions or comments about that particular motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now.
Okay, now I can ask my question again.
Yeah, you have.
Okay. The other direction I'm looking for today is, do we have a consensus on where we would like the final levy to be? And how would we like to get there? Is it use of fund balance? Is it use of ARP dollars?
My feeling is I would like to see our levy ending up under two percent. You know, I don't know how the rest. You know, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but I think that this year we have the ability, if I'm correct in what you gentlemen that have worked on the budget have indicated.
Well, I think, I would, I would concur with that, I th- I think we could easily, you know, a one point eight five, one point seven five. Maybe as low as one and a half, the trouble with getting down to a point and a half is we know our our costs of doing business as far as labor and and steps and increases every year cost us roughly that, so to go tighter than that, we know we're negative spending, and we have some issues coming forward, you know, if we're retiring people and stuff right now, so we tend to we got some things on the horizon that are challenging, I think, moving forward. When you're at a two point six starting out, there isn't a lot of wiggle room, you know, if we're at a six or eight, you can find a lot of room, but if you had anywhere between, uh, I'd say a low end one point five, you know, high end one point eight, something like that, somewhere in that. I I would, I guess I would propose myself to use some fund balance to get there versus ARP, I think that's taxpayer money, that's already been paid, and they deserve to have that help to cause moving forward. I mean, we're just what we're asking for from them in the next year.
In in our discussions, you indicated to me that your revenue is conservative. So our revenue may be stronger than we anticipate also.
And our expenses are conservative as well, so they could be less, so.
Did everybody read the link we got from, was it Malax coming?
Yeah, Malax coming.
That that kind of puts a fear of Jesus in you, you start reading about that stuff, but special circumstances there.
Yeah, I'd be a, I'd be more on the aggressive side at closer to the one five, because in this particular year with uh COVID drought and everything, I think it's it's good to keep it on a little more on a down low in terms of what we got, cause we have the ARP money, which is cash basically now for the county, which I don't care which fund you use it from, uh, whether it's general fund balance or ARP. I don't know if it matters at this point in terms of designation or not, but I'd be a little more clo- differently at the one five level area.
Yeah, indifference and three tenths of a point.
Nothing, no, I mean, not much, it's something. Yeah, I'm just saying we should.
Yep.
Where are we at with the architects?
Uh, we are negotiating a contract at this moment.
So we're.
So we're close.
Work in progress, cause that would be interesting to get.
It is at my partner to my right's desk to review.
Okay.
Yeah, how far to the right? I don't even have a desk, Andrew, so I think I'm disqualified.
Defying partners.
Of course, you didn't, you didn't say partner.
True, true, that's another can of worms, so. But.
So I'm fine with that too, although I am, have become convinced over the years that wanna go like like this, obviously with the levy. We don't wanna be in a position where we're at two percent this year and have to go to twelve next year, that's just not a good place to be, so. With values going up, people are gonna feel it anyways, so our tax base, so.
But but our advantage though is we have the ARP.
Yep.
ARP money that's a, you're able to allocate as cash loss.
I agree, I agree.
You know.
Now, the ARP monies, what can that be spent on, what can it not be spent on? I made a note, the ARP dollars is not meant for um hiring more people. It's meant for like equipment purchases or maintenance purchases, what what is it?
So the American Rescue Plan Act identifies four broad categories that the money can be used for.
Okay.
The big one as far as we're concerned is revenue loss, so um what, if you're able to allocate the funds as revenue loss, then you can use them for governmental purposes, which is a very broad statement, you can't use it to pay for debt, you can't use it to pay for, you can't use it to pad a a a pension fund, so if we had an underfunded pension fund, we couldn't use it to put money into that pension fund. Um, we, but we can use it for those governmental purposes, so Sharon and I have worked together and we're confident that over the course of the the four years, we're gonna be able to uh determine that all the funds are gonna be able to use as revenue loss, and so provides us with that that broad purpose. Because the funds are only of, there's a set dollar amount, right, we only have four and a half million dollars and then it's gone. Because of that, we um don't wanna use it to necessarily fund an ongoing expense, but some of these capital projects that we have coming up, which is why we identified a number of IT projects, which is why we identified the the scanning. Um, and any of these other items that are on here, we could potentially use to use ARP dollars for. Um, and because of that timeline that's out there, if we're gonna do that to fund some of these projects, I would suggest using the ARP dollars, because our our fund balance will be there beyond twenty twenty four, but this money won't necessarily be.
So that that was where I was kind of heading with this, I I want to know if we have some big projects now, we have this this pot of money, if we can take care of some of those instead of funding things that then once the money is gone, we will have to pick up the tab for.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the one thing I think should be brought up is that as far as ARP, we do have a possibility that we may end up getting some township monies if they can't spend it. And those will have to be designated for ARP use probably only.
Yeah.
So I would use that in the mind thought of like, okay, how do we spend this? We might end up, cause I just know they'll have a, some of them will have a struggle trying to figure out how to spend it, because they won't get all the revenue loss like we did, so that's a potential. Like, you know, maybe for that sheriff's, the EMS or something or something like that, those kind of programs, maybe you leave that hold until we see if the townships do give us, cause then you have to spend it according to what they say, and you don't wanna waste that money by spending on something you really don't need or want, which. I mean, I'm just, I don't know, we have no idea in terms of that, it's it's a vague assumption.
Would that money come available?
Couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years, yeah.
Longer, I mean, they have, they have the same timeline as we.
They do.
Right.
So.
Could be up to three years.
Okay.
Which brings me to a question, have any of the townships reached out for information from you or help?
Yeah, we we had that meeting, um and then after the meeting, I had two or three townships reach out with different questions about calculating revol- calculating revenue loss or if certain funds could be used for certain expenses, and so um you know, I I either was able to answer it, I or got them going in the right direction, talking to the right people, so.
But to Steve's point, it'll be probably a couple of years, cause they'll wanna make sure exactly if they can utilize it or not. They're not gonna just do like last year, because they had to.
Timeline was so short last night, I mean, it was ridiculously short, really.
But I just wanted to throw that out there, that it, there that, there could be a potential pot there, then you have to use it for ARP designated usage.
So I'm hearing consensus of one and a half percent?
You know, I've been asked to see what the exact cost to be at one and a half would be, or.
That should be pretty simple, right?
It's pretty much peanuts, but let's.
And the point's gonna be one sixty?
So um, you know, what I had done is I did an exercise taking big chunks of dollars to get us down to just under zero percent. Um, so we started two point five nine, if we pay for the squads and all the associated equipment to two hundred twenty one thousand, that gets us down to one point one six, so it would be one ninety, I would say, is what we would end up taking out of fund balance or ARP.
Yeah, it's doable.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But do you anticipate, I know you've been through the budget process guy, I know you've had your week long everyday session, but could there still be some changes that will drive some of those line items up?
I don't believe that on the expense side, you know, we did have one change since the, we went through the budget meetings, um we got our insurance estimate from um MCIT for next year, that was higher than what we thought we were gonna have. Um, the workers' comp was about forty two thousand dollars higher than what we had budgeted or estimated. Um, and so we um, you know, were able to make adjustments and still find ourselves in the spot that we're at today, without really any major change.
Well, what brought that to mind was you and I, Julie, met last week and and talked about uh moving one of the departments potentially.
Yes.
But then we would have to fund another thirty thousand dollars in the appropriations, so that brought to my mind, okay, there's something that couldn't go up before this budget is finalized.
Could, um, well, and for everyone else who was not part of that meeting, we'll have a broader meeting about that in the future. Um, we, assuming that other pieces align that keep us going down the path, it's about the AIS, the direction that we had discussed previously.
Gotcha.
Back together now, so um, the, again, we would, for the twenty twenty two budget, we would be able to find an equal amount elsewhere to pay for it out of fund balance, so.
Okay, but that's that's the kind of thing, you know, that makes you think, okay, these line items aren't all set yet.
It is preliminary at this point and will not be set until December.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if it makes you feel better though, we still have that land purchased or that lot purchased that will come back into us.
How's that going?
It's going, we are negotiating a purchase agreement.
Didn't say that very.
No, it's going.
Oh.
The um, the purchase agreement is currently with my partner to the right. Um, no, we're, we're, we're negotiating an agreement with them, so it's coming along.
I imagine they're a corporation that does a lot of it, they just have one way of doing things, and I figured it would be pretty simple, but maybe not.
It takes, I.
You did, I guess you did, yes.
Takes, I think it took about a year, because they have to do their preliminary studies and then that needs to get approved and then.
People are very excited.
Green light, they can go, then they close.
Yeah.
But it is a po- possible asset that we would have.
Sure.
I mean, it's only supposed to be for projects, or capital projects, that money is zoned for, but we might have one of those.
But that also cushions that, I mean, it 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 helps, you know, you're looking at, I'm looking at four three tenths of a point up on Andrew's chart up here, you know, that's forty five, fifty thousand dollars is four tenths.
Mm-hmm.
Three, three tenths, so we can add three tenths to that one point one six, that's fifty thousand, so you're at fifteen, seven forty five. Is a one point five.
Is that the direction you wanted from us?
That is the direction on this, and I will move forward with that, the other question is as we look at the um the two-year American Rescue Plan, plan, uh, are, of the items that are still undetermined that we have in the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two columns, so we have the um Assistant County Attorney, we have the countywide EMS paging radio repeater system, um touchless communication system for the hospital, um, and then we already talked about this one, the, and then the two thousand dollars for the Pearl Works fencing. Are any of these items you would like to move over into the allocated side and um are there any changes that we would like to see on this at this point?
The paging, that's all in ARP funding?
This would all be ARP funding, yes.
And I don't know if it matters, but I was talking to uh Brian last week about about those things, and I also brought up the uh, that other, what, the simulator and stuff to him and stuff. And I also mentioned, you know, about possible ARP money from townships, and I said we might be holding off a little bit, my opinion was to hold off a little bit on the paging and the repeater system, maybe hold that back a little bit until we actually see what some of this other stuff comes through, and if we actually do get township monies, it'd be an easy one to allot to that particular thing. That's what I, I said that was just my opinion, I didn't say that in full board, but.
And how how long do we have to get that done, does he, he have?
Uh, uh, the the paging system?
I mean, I know it's getting outdated, but.
He said, you know, it could go a couple of years, you know, it's, the the repeating system, is that the one with the schools?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and he would have to get consensus from both Litchfield and ACGC though, right, because they fund half of that also?
That's what the initial funding scheme was going to be.
Also, wasn't he gonna talk to the city too about?
Yes.
Of course, we haven't heard any more information on that.
I think the two fifty two on the paging, I mean, actually, the, that would be something, wouldn't hurt to talk to your townships about too, cause that's county.
Yeah, there you go.
That's all your rescue squads, that's all your handling services, so I mean, that would be something for the townships, it's public safety, it's a public safety.
And that was my gut reaction too, to that, now that would be a good.
You know, if if every township threw in ten thousand dollars.
And and that would. Infrastructure and technology.
And public safety and.
They wouldn't have any problem justifying that.
No, and I think they're gonna struggle to try to use.
I think that one might be a little questionable, but we can dig deeper, as far as whether it's a ARP expense outside of the revenue loss.
Oh, okay, that's right, you mentioned that.
Oh, it might, it might be because of the EMS piece, so we'd have to.
It's an area worth conversation.
Absolutely.
Gotcha.
I like, I like that concept.
Yeah.
I could see you doing it, wanting to be a part of that, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but.
They're just gonna, they're, they will struggle to try to figure it out unless they have, the cities probably won't, like you said, they can do sewer and water and stuff like you had mentioned, but the townships.
They might, they might welcome, they might welcome some suggestions from.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, so that's a good idea.
And you may wanna think about that, because they have their Association of Township meeting coming up, Seth the Legion.
It's next week.
Uh, when is it?
Next week.
No, better not be next week, I'm not ready for next week.
It's so small, I've gone to it.
It's the last uh, it's on a Tuesday.
You know, give them something to read or consider.
Oh, it's the twenty eighth, it's the twenty eighth, I'm two weeks ahead.
And and that re- repeater system, that was based on if we put eighty thousand into Litchfield and eighty thousand into ACGC? Is that what that was kind of based on?
I can't recall.
I think that's what he had meant, and then they would match it with their funding, but he said it's a struggle to have them understand the schools, to have the understanding that the importance of it on their end, he said, so. He said, he thinks it's a definite si- thing that would be positive, but I I think that a hundred and sixty means only half per. I don't know, you'd have to look that up, but.
Because we have multiple school districts represented in the county.
But there's two school districts that are are in Meker County, and that's how he based it on, and he said Ian Valley's system is good because they are real close to a tower already.
Yes.
Yeah, so they get their coverage.
Right.
The these are the school districts that require the repeater system.
But the school districts, he said their appetite has not, has been excited about this particular thing because they haven't seen, you know, they don't see the benefit as much.
So I think what we can do for both of these projects is we can um look for other partners to work with us on them.
And I think one thing we should keep in mind too, that the schools, my understanding, are getting some ARP funding through this round.
Correct.
Two, and I don't know what their guidelines are, but this might be something that falls in, you know, worth the conversation. Similar to townships and public safety, I mean.
It's not, in his mind, it was not like s- something that had to be done now, but he said it would be beneficial to the schools and to the, to the EMS in general.
The paging system, we will at some point.
Period.
I remember, have to spend that thousand, then you could end up levying for it, so that.
Right.
But I think we should have further discussion, I think that would be something to talk with township to vote.
If it qualifies, I guess you'd have to.
We'll look into it further.
Yep.
So can we set those off to the side then and um wait?
The other request that we had uh was the Assistant County Attorney. Um, what I had done on here is I assumed that we would pursue a higher this current year to start working on the backlog. I had an assumption of a higher date of November first, which is where this dollar amount comes from, and then we have a um a full cost in twenty twenty two, and then there would be a partial cost in twenty twenty three uh to complete out that two-year stretch.
I thought I was waiting for some more information on backlog and things yet, so I would be ready to talk about, I understand. I thought I was waiting for some more information on backlog and things yet, so I would be ready to talk about, I understand you've lot, you're looking for one now that you lost another one. I'm sorry to hear.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, so I would be interested in some more information on that.
Sure, but thank you for reminding me. We'll table this discussion until we get to that piece. Do you wanna talk about the touchless communication system for the hospital?
That's fine, I mean, I, I think, I, I've talked to Kurt a little bit about it. It certainly isn't something I would think we would have to move on right now. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
That's what I think, Paul, you think so too?
Well, it wouldn't have to be right now.
I, I, you know, I talked to him a little bit about it. I understand the concept, but I would want him in the discussion on that, to say so.
Cause they do have fund balances too, so they could.
They do. You know, this.
With all the whole complexity of the hospital thing, it's.
But what, the part is though, you know, this COVID is back now, so here we go again.
Right.
So your sort staff and there's, I know there's gotta be some in, so. I would like to leave it on the table, but for further discussion later, if that's okay.
And like Beth said, now with COVID coming back and the possibility of mandates on the vaccine for people, we could lose staff.
Easily. I mean, Meker County isn't moving that way, but. It involves some of center care employees in ours that work together in the county.
I get their, the, the wanting. In my mind, I'm a little apprehensive to say yes, because I don't know what'll happen with the future of the hospital. And I just hate to just cut a check.
I don't know what that adds or did, I don't think it has a thing to do with center care.
No, 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 but I mean, in the concept, if something did happen.
That, yeah, but I think that, I don't know what it does to the value and I just would want more discussion on it.
Sure.
It's a good idea, obviously, especially in not these times, so.
Well, and I know Kurt was working on getting information together for costs for a PP material management system and so.
That's another thing we have.
I, I think that when that comes together, what we can do is we can have him come in and talk about both of the items.
Good idea.
Might be a higher priority comes first.
Yeah. Uh, and then the last one is a request that we got at the very end of the week. I, um, forwarded you the letter requesting it this morning. It was a two thousand dollar request from Pearl Works for fencing around the back of their building here in Litchfield. It allows them to have, um, folks spend more time outdoors, uh, without the chance of them.
Yeah.
Running off.
I don't have any issue with anything Pearl Works needs, so, I mean. Especially with that limited amount of money. I think that's fine to do that right away, if they need it right away. They need it right away.
I. Compared to the rest of the budget, I mean, it's.
In the big picture, it's.
Not.
I think they're struggling a little right now anyway, looking for.
Nice part would be they'd be able to get it in this fall yet.
Yeah.
Correct, so then in that case, I would recommend a, a motion, uh, approving the use of two thousand dollars of ARP funds for Pearl Works for fencing.
I would make a motion for two thousand dollars for fencing for Pearl Works.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
One quick comment, Andrew, on the EBA, just Danny, between the two, you can refresh, did we do ninety?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, is a fifty percent, fifty percent increase.
Yeah.
Cause it was sixty and it went to ninety.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to service the people we have already, which is not.
Yeah, I don't have that on, cause on a different, it's not on that appropriations budget.
Went from sixty to ninety.
So it's not, yes, it went from sixty to ninety.
So, can, let's talk about appropriations for a minute, if we can, are we done with this?
Can I just add one more thing? What's your timeline if you did need a second assistant attorney? I mean, are, are you to, to try to recruit one this year? Is it, are we just basically waiting on you to get some more information for Beth to move one way or another on the second assistant attorney?
Correct, so I was planning on bringing numbers to our next meeting. And then at that time, if it was approved, then I would just be hiring based upon the same pool of two attorneys. One would be for full-time, the other one would be based upon a contract. Um, it'd be nice to know before we start doing interviews that decision, because then I could have that conversation with them at the interview saying, you know. Are you here for a full-time, um, position or would you be willing to accept a contract?
Yeah, that's the only reason I brought that up is cause I figured she's already interviewing if there's actually two potential. Possible candidates that were good, you know, you'd like to get them.
But I.
For Meker, but I get it.
Yeah, I just wanna look at some information.
My gut tells me if we hire it, it's.
No, I, I absolutely agree, unless she's got them on a one-year contract or something.
That's automatic with Meker anyway, right?
Is the November one timeline realistic? I mean, have you seen that?
Yes, yep, yep. I think we could do, it would probably, probably be mid-November.
Um, and since we're talking about personnel hook before we jump into the appropriations of the, the new positions. Uh, unless there's further discussion that we wanna have on the too-heavy equipment operator positions. What we would do is, um, what we would intend to do is move forward with recruiting those positions later this fall. After the private contractors have done their layoffs, with the intent of having someone start, or those two individuals hopefully starting in January first. But we would start that process before the budget gets formally approved, so that we're not too late in the process and those folks are already thinking about going back to private.
Sure, and my other question about that was, and I was waiting for Phil to get some more information on. We decided perhaps a townships would be paying for one of these people and I haven't seen any information on new numbers, have you?
That was part of the discussion, was that it would be included in the rate for the townships. Um, thirty percent of the cost of these positions would be included in that.
But I think at our last meeting that Phil spoke at, he said that that new contract would not be anymore for this year. It wasn't gonna be.
It would be for twenty twenty-two. Well, but either way, either way, even if it's, we still adjust the rate annually.
Three, I think, cause I think when the townships already have twenty twenty-two ratified, we can't hire anybody.
In their budgets?
Yeah, they've already set their level.
Yeah.
For, for twenty, yep.
Was it run, was it run a calendar year? I can't remember how the contract.
I think.
Yes, contract is calendar.
It is, okay.
Is calendar.
So. That kinda s- so if it's twenty-three, then we're gonna have the full expense of the two employees.
So, um, I'm not a hundred percent positive how Phil accounted for those costs, uh, for those employees. And, and we can get that information.
Well, if, if you recall the Personnel Committee meeting, that was a big discussion.
Mm-hmm.
If we did two was, we have to get some money, because if we didn't have the townships, we wouldn't be, right?
And I'm trying to recall what he had said about the township agreements and what the rate was gonna be.
Well, maybe we can get more information. At least the positive thing is we have the two in our twenty twenty-two budget.
Right.
So in twenty twenty-three, no matter what, it'll be a little bit better, but I think it.
And that's exactly the point that I was getting at is the levy, incre- the levy that we're setting. The ultimate final levy would include whatever funded formula that he has right now for these two positions. Um, and we would still be at that percentage, so we wouldn't bump that up if the townships aren't paying for a portion of it, but I'll, I'll check.
But what she's getting at is we are gonna subsidize the township a little more than thirty percent in twenty twenty-two, just because of the timing.
We'll, we'll double check that.
One thing, Danny, that was not a unanimous decision of Personnel Committee, she wanted four.
Oh.
Even he knows me better than that.
I gotta put that in my notes.
Everybody knows me better than that.
I don't oughta do notes. I, I keep that one for a snide comment later.
That's, I'm getting used to it.
Didn't think that one through far.
No.
All right.
What else, Andrew?
Um, I believe we wanna have a discussion about appropriations.
So I had, um, let me find it here now, Agriculture Society, the fair. Requested, um, eighteen thousand dollars and I'm trying to find, and we went to twelve, which was significant. They, I do some work out there, they really are struggling this year because of not being able to have a fair last year. And I don't, in my opinion, I would like to see that go up some, I, maybe not to eighteen thousand, but. They need money. They've been out really working hard just trying to get money from people. The hospital sponsored their forage judges. They've been working hard, so I'm just wondering why we decided twelve instead of eight.
Well, one of the things that we looked at on that one, um, specifically was. Since we added the cost of that new building, you know, and we're coming up on the last payment. And then we, with adding that new building, once our insurance numbers, I believe, used to be, originally, we paid the insurance out there.
Right.
And the insurance was six thousand or sixty-five. Insurance has more than doubled with that building on there in the last couple of years. So in essence, we are giving them, uh, eighteen thousand five hundred. But if you add the addition of the new building, the cost of insurance, and once I explain that to the Fair Board President. And to the sec- or the treasurer, Lori Schultz and Greg Nelson, they understood.
They didn't have an issue with you, was it?
No, no. Cause I said, I, and I said, once we get done paying the building off. Which we have one more payment on that at twenty, so in essence, they're getting the twelve thousand dollar appropriation. They're getting twenty thousand dollars for the five years.
But we've always.
Thirteen thousand, five hundred for our insurance, which used to be six thousand.
We've always paid their insurance, but my point is they, they're just struggling financially, so that was my question, that they didn't have.
That was the reasoning, that, so we, in essence, we are giving them eighteen thousand, by, because the insurance is doubled.
I understand, but I would like to, so you, does anybody have a mind to give them a couple thousand dollars more or not?
Good, can I just question, could the townships use any of their funds to contribute towards the fair?
Well, I, I mean, they, they, I don't know anything about the ARP money, but they aren't gonna do the, the regular.
Well, I, I do have a township in my district that. Gives a donation to, uh. Yes, we've never, we, I know we won't do it in Nan, or we've never done it, but they give to the Grove City Care Board, they give like twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And, uh, so that's similar, that's a similar, you know.
So if they had a revenue loss, or, or township could show a revenue loss, could they make a donation to the county fair board from those ARP funds?
Well, if they had a revenue loss, yeah, because that's just cash. But I'm just saying each, their appetites are very unique.
Yep.
And I'm not gonna, you know, I'm just asking if we can raise it a couple thousand dollars. If the consensus is no, then I won't make a motion, but I would, otherwise I would be making a motion.
We're just defending the, what we, our logic was, cause last year it was twelve thousand also. And then when Sharon went through, I think we asked Sharon to see what the insurance or the was, and it was like six thousand.
And we have a, an, with the extension offices out there, right?
Yep.
What else is out there, um? They, they have the building that they ran out of, I don't know.
Agriculture Society, County Extension Service.
But they, last year, we're not able to do that, so I know that, you know, so.
So, and I, and I think our anticipation, I, I, that I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, Danny, can correct me, but I mean, our, our anticipation. Is once that building is paid off, that then we would have the appetite. Cause we have incurred significant, I mean, we're, our costs are roughly forty thousand dollars out there. Can add them up, but it's twelve and thirteen, plus twenty, so forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars.
This year, the last year of it, twenty twenty-two is?
Twenty-two is the final.
Twenty-two, yeah.
And you had, and you had a discussion with the fair board?
Yeah, I, I went and talked to Greg at the fair, cause we did this right before the fair. And I talked to Greg and Lori at the fair, and I said, just so you understand, we approved the budget as was. But I said the cost of your insurance has gone up sixty-five hundred dollars in the last two years, which is more than double what it was. So in essence, you are getting eighteen thousand five hundred, in a different way, I mean, we're, we're absorbing all the, the costs and the insurance. Right now, their, their total appropriation with the twenty thousand, the twelve thousand dollar direct appropriation and the thirteen thousand five hundred. Is the three checks that the county writes towards the fair.
When it says final egg society payment.
That's the fair building.
That's the building.
And we, as a county, have helped to pay for that to the tune of twenty thousand dollars a year? For how many years?
Five years.
Well, so we've stuck a hundred thousand dollars into that.
I did that when they built the building, which by the way, I voted against that, because I didn't think that was something we should have been tackling, but. They're, they're in a different position this year because of COVID like everybody else, so if that isn't, if nobody else has the mind for a couple more thousand dollars, I'll move on. Otherwise, I'm gonna make a motion.
We would be able to take that funding from potential townships, or do we want to?
I, I wouldn't count, I wouldn't count on the townships, so.
That's their call.
Either, if they're not, you know, either we leave it like it is, or I would make a motion that we go to fifteen. That was gonna be my motion, so. I'm gonna make the motion, if it doesn't get a second, uh, that's fine. So I'll make a motion that it go from, uh, twelve to fifteen thousand.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So. Any more discussion?
Yeah. Anyone have any additional discussion on that?
So where potentially will this DuGrant come from? What fund or general or?
We will hit a levy increase of one point five percent and we will do so by making.
These aren't big requests.
Adjustments out of the ARP and fund balance.
Any additional discussion or questions, um?
Do we do all these at once appropriations, or do we do it individually then, as far as?
I only have, I only have one more and I bet you know what it is.
I think so.
Um, I mean, this is just discussion on the, on the budget, so.
Okay.
We're not actually approving the budget yet, we're not actually approving these payments. Right now, this is what's in the budget.
But we can, we, we would, if the motion passes, the appropriations.
We would adjust the budget to reflect the additional appropriation.
Yep.
Any additional discussion or questions?
I guess my, my only comment would be, uh, I, I have no problem going up in the future, but. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that we have gone up, we have been increasing with the increased expenditures out there. The insurance and those things have gone up too, so it has costs of county money every year. You know, as we put money in, their, their cost to insure that has gone up, so we have incurred other costs.
And I do, I understand that, and if it was any other year, you wouldn't hear me request, I'll tell you, but I, I.
And I guess, the thinking, I just wanna say from the Budget Committee to thinking was that after this twenty-two budget. Then there's that twenty thousand dollars is paid off, and then there's dollars that are add additional to their.
Have we seen their balance sheet? I mean, where they're at financially?
Uh, I can't remember what we got from them.
I haven't seen it, but I know they, they're struggling financially.
Think, we, we didn't get a balance sheet for sure, right?
I'm looking to see what we got from them.
It wasn't balanced.
It wasn't a balance sheet like a balance sheet, you know.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no.
Where are they at? I mean, how are they doing? You know, I'd like to, that would be something I'd like to.
If I was having a fair last year and all attendance, I, I can realize that they're probably struggling.
Yeah, well, unless they're fibbing to me, I haven't seen a balance sheet either, but it's a, it's a good event, it's children oriented, it was busy, was. Not as busy, I don't think, but they're working hard and, and like I said, if it would have been any other year, you wouldn't have heard this.
There is a right interaction, there's, you know, the corn growers, we do.
Right, they're starting to do some things.
We're starting, like this year, we, uh, we just had the picnic out there this year. And, uh, we're looking at keeping it out there, we have our board meetings out there, so there's different things, corn growers are putting more money into. Um, that way, so, um, there's, uh, there's, like I said. And the other organizations that I am involved with that have appropriations through, towards that building. Have kinda said the same thing, once they're done paying for it, once we make our final payments, then we have extra dollars to give to them. And to work more dollars, so that's really been the target, is just wait until the five payments are made. And then the next budget cycle, you have dollars to work with, so.
Call for the question, I gotta move on here.
Let's take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Fine. My other one is, it's fine, Paul, you don't, I don't have an issue with it.
No, no.
Okay.
I just felt the need to bring it up.
From what I could hear, the motion failed.
The motion failed.
Okay.
So my other one is the Humane Society asked for, um, twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And, which was a significant cut from the year before, right? In twenty-one, well, let me look here, maybe I'm wrong. There was twenty-four thousand budget. Two thousand twenty, they, the actual was twenty-two, seven, ninety-three, okay? So I'm curious, why the four hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
Well, here's where the, when we were asking these questions, and, uh, here's where the rub was, to be honest, is when, what we're trying to figure all this out. Is when we were asking, we're like, okay, what are the other counties? And I think, I don't know how many animals Renville took in, they took in from Renville.
They have a record of it.
There's some, yeah, it was, there's like a hundred and fifty or something, I don't know the exact. But they weren't funding you guys, or the Humane Society at all.
Nope.
And that's our pushback, to be honest, because we're like going, why are we funding it? But Renville's not, and then I think, was it Candy Ojai or someone? Was that seventy-five dollars per animal?
Well, they, they donated the land and the building in Candy Ojai, and they do a lot of the maintenance, and so.
So there's a, a different structure, part of that into it.
And they have a lot more of the animals. But, so you know, I, I've served on this since I, they do a lot of fundraising, you can't operate anything with the amount of money that's budgeted from us and Candy Ojai. They do a lot of personal fundraising. We have sent letters out to every county that brings animals in. And trying to get some kind of response. Look, if your sheriff brings some over, we can charge, but sometimes a citizen comes from Renville County and drops a dog off at the door, and you're not gonna, these people aren't gonna turn them away, cause they're, they're gonna leave them, no matter what. So we've sent letters out to each county asking to set up how much they're gonna charge, and that, that they'd be willing to take, pay it. So if somebody from Renville brings an animal over and they don't wanna make a donation, we want the county to say, and I'm picking on Renville, but any of the counties around, we want them to say, we will pay it. And we haven't got them to agree to that, but we're still working on it. But they raised a lot of funding, they worked very hard at it, and we need a new van now, that's fully funded, they're not coming to us for that. So to me, that, they understand, trust me, they understand that we, we've talked about this issue for three years. But I think to give them the, take away four hundred and sixty-eight dollars is just, you know, I, I just would like to give them the money that they asked for.
And it wasn't, we really weren't going off, we were looking at the formula that they gave us, and it was actually twenty-two thou, whatever that number was, and that is what we gave them, and it happened to be four.
Twenty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight.
Numbers or scenarios that you calculated, that Danny calculated, oh, we're going through budget was, I mean, if we, I, I wanna say it was Candy's number, but our, our proportion came out to fifteen thousand, if we ran it that way, or sixteen.
Well, if you took all the animals or something, I.
Well, the formula is, can you help me on the formula here, that gets so many?
Montevideo is huge, the city of Montevideo and Chiplock.
Right, and, but they also have donors from those counties that make big donations, and if they didn't have those donations coming in, we would be spending a lot more money, because we don't, what is it costing now to operate that place a day? I.
Well, we don't get a budget.
It's a thousand dollars a day.
See a budget, that's.
It's about a thousand.
Budget.
Do you want one?
Yes.
But I.
That was, that's part of the thing, we're, we're looking at, you know, give us the budget and let us work through it.
You're, you're taking four hundred and sixty-eight dollars away, I'm just asking you.
Like, like Danny said, it was a formula we used.
It was, is, is that a formula like Paul had made before?
They have, we have a contract with them, that zero to so many animals is so much, and then I can have it in front of me, and we do have a budget, we do have a budget.
No, and I, and I, uh.
And that, that's just how we actually derived that, that number, it wasn't four hundred and sixty-eight dollars that we decided to take off, it was just whatever the two hundred and one.
That's how much it came out to?
Whatever the two hundred and one animal units, I think is where, and we're right at two oh one, and I think we just did what that number was, wasn't it Andrew?
So you just adjusted it because they had the math wrong?
I think so, to be honest.
So I, I believe that, so to jump onto some of these numbers here.
Yeah, I, I don't.
The fifteen thousand dollar number came up, which would be seventy-five dollars per animal times two hundred and one animals, so that's where that came from.
Okay.
Um, I don't recall exactly how we hit twenty-two thousand dollars, cause it doesn't come out to be a round number. Um, when you divide it out, it's a hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents, so I'm not hundred percent positive how we got to that.
Do you have that formula anywhere in there?
I actually have it, uh, in front of me here, and.
And like I said, the biggest trouble is trying to work to know where their dollars are coming from, because the way it looks like, it looks like it was Candy Ojai or funding, you know, there was a dog.
Well, it's the Meeker, it's the Meeker Candy, Humane Society, Steve, cause we started it, and if you think, I, I know, but I feel like you did this just to be, you know, cause, because you could. That's what I felt about the four sixty-eight.
There's a dog, and there came from New Prague, that's a hundred miles from here, there's dogs from, uh, south of Malax.
You don't have to believe me, have, have we ever had this discussion?
We need to verify, you know.
Well, sometimes they go to reservations and get dogs, and we make money on, by adopting them.
And I, and I don't have a problem with that, but it, it just feels, the one we have, Mont, I mean, the, Montevideo.
I agree.
Multiple dogs.
I agree, but, but.
Being paying a dime.
We have asked everybody for money, and we're not having the kind of success at it that we thought we should have.
And I, and I did, I did bought gun raffle tickets.
I agree, you have.
I went to the.
So it says twenty-two, four, six, eight.
So my point is, they are here, they're trying.
I, I don't even remember how we came up with twenty-two, to be honest.
But the point is this, they raise a lot of their own money. And you, it's a thousand dollars a day, or probably more now to keep the shelter open. So what we give and Candy Ojai gives isn't ever gonna keep it open, it's done on a lot of donations and stuff. And we're aware of the issue of other cities and counties. I've told commissioners, you have an obligation to take care of your own animals or contribute, but you can tell them forever, and and if you turn them away, they're just gonna be running out in Wilmer, and they're gonna bring them back. So, you know, that's, this has been discussed for three years at least, and we're trying to move forward with it, so.
Are the cities involved with helping to fund?
Well, Wilmer is, Wilmer is.
Like the city of Litchfield?
We have a span neuter now, uh, at, uh, fifty dollars or something a cat, if you bring one, feral cats in, and we ask for the donation. But if they don't leave it, what are you gonna do?
They leave the cat, but they don't leave the donation.
That's what the issue is, so, anyway.
I'll be honest, only rub really, Beth, was that, when I saw Renville, and they didn't contribute at all, I was just like going, whoa.
You have the same rub as I do, Danny, believe me.
And, and I, to be get it brought up to attention to this board, I think is ba, the basis of it.
Well, we talked about it last year, and the year before, this is nothing new about this, it's been discussed for at least three years.
Well, and is it something that us and Candy Ojai county commissioners need to?
We've talked about it. Steve Gardner is on the, we talk about it all the time, we just had a discussion at the last board meeting that we're gonna start talking to the commissioners. But these are animals, and they bring them, and what are you gonna do? You know, we got people that are running the shelter that aren't gonna turn them away. And she'll tell you also that they have some donors, good donors from those counties too that contribute. And when you start turning their animals away, they're not gonna be donors anymore. So, there's more to it, but we have written letters, and then we were gonna start making visits, and then COVID hit, so we couldn't make visits. But I think we are planning on visiting county boards.
Does Candy and Meeker the only one that have representatives from, of commissioners on it then? Because it's the Candy, Meeker.
And then, but we also have citizens on there.
Oh, no, I know, cause I know Cory's on there, yeah.
Cory's on there, and, uh, Ivy's on there, and two from each, uh.
Yeah, and we did approve a change to the bylaws where we can have one.
One from outside the area.
From outside the two counties.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just.
Do you have any from Renville?
No. They don't get to vote on there.
It's difficult to find people to serve on the board.
No, I, yeah.
And I would not, they're not a part of the, you know, what I've tried to convince them of, and we don't have to have a lengthy discussion over four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, but I just thought it was reasonable, it was a reasonable request. I have said to commissioners, and when you see Renville County Commissioners, say, who's paying for your animals? Cause I say it all the time. But until we get them to agree, that when a citizen from your county brings, I think some of them, if the sheriff brings them in, we can bill them, right?
I think, well, I think she bills them, but I don't know.
She bills them, and whether she gets paid every time or not.
So only the representatives come from Meeker or Candy Ojai?
Because we're, we own the shelter.
Gotcha, I, I just.
Like the joint.
Cause I'm just thinking, if you did get a representative from Renville, then they would start pushing the commissioners.
As soon as they, uh, well, I think they have, and we're doing more letter writing, and we're planning on going to some more meetings, but COVID hit and we couldn't. But we've talked about this for a couple of years, so.
I have no problem doing the twenty-two, four, six, eight. I wanted this brought up.
But you know, maybe the way to go is, okay, the four sixty-eight, yes. In the future, here's what we're gonna use. That way they got a whole year to plan on how the dollars are gonna.
And I think that's fine, but.
We do need to see it. It would help if we could see a budget, cause then we could figure in where we, who's doing the zoo, and where, where we fit, you know, and.
Well, then I, I would.
Kind of going blind, and then when we use other, trying to get numbers to come up, the numbers, you start running math, and it's like, well, this, we're not, it doesn't compute, it doesn't.
Well, I think some of these we see a budget for, and some of them we don't. You can see a budget, I have it probably, you know, I can email to you. But some of these appropriations, we don't do that with. But it's, if you take a thousand dollars a day to run it, and you look at we, what we contribute, we're fortunate to have this partnership, and they, we now need a van. When things need to be fixed at the shelter, a lot of times Candy Ojai covers that. They send somebody in, sometimes we pay for it, sometimes we don't. Everybody should be worried about where their animals are going, but they're not, so.
No, and that, and that's, they provide us with the list of the animals and where they came from, and I believe it was.
But we started that, but we started that a couple of years ago, because I brought that up. I said, we can't be paying more for animals from other counties than we are, right? And we had the discussion, and we're working on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So Danny, you said you're gonna move with the four sixty-eight?
I, I can, I, I have no prob, I wanted a discussion.
It wasn't about the four sixty-eight, it was about trying to.
Having a discussion why Renville and some of these other counties are.
It's a good discussion, because they really, so when you meet your commissioners, bring it up.
Yeah.
There you go.
We'll get them at, we'll get them at Arrow.
Well, we're gonna have to, yeah, they asked.
So many volunteers and donations and.
So I would make a motion that we give the full request to the Hot Creek Shelter.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Also.
We have a motion with a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yes.
Unless there's anything else on the budget, this concludes our discussion about it. We'll continue to talk about ARP items as they, um, they come through. But, uh, the next time that I would plan on us having a discussion about the budget is at the truth and taxation meeting in, uh, mid-December, and then the final approval of the budget at the end of the year. So we'll, um, I have the direction of where you would like me to go with this, and we will get it there.
I think that, um, the attorney, the sooner we get the information for the attorney's office, the better, than you're doing. And I got one quick question before we move on.
And I have one too.
Having, having an ex-employee come here like today, I, I'm not, that, I know that we can't stop that, but I'm not comfortable with it. And am I the only one that was uncomfortable with that? I guess so.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I just think, I didn't either, so I felt like, if this has really been an issue, I don't know why I haven't, I, I know we've had a lot of discussions about the dispatch supervisor.
This is the first time I've heard of this as an issue.
I felt kinda.
There's two things, there's.
I like Marlene, it isn't that, it's just I was surprised by it, and I don't know. I mean, Brandy, you're a department head, how would you like that happening to you?
My personal feelings versus.
No.
The people, what people say in the community is no different than what they could come and say at the public comment period. I think it's just one of those pieces that you just kinda accept the information, and then go and have those discussions behind the scenes, and really vet what the true issues are, cause there's usually other.
Well, that's my point, and.
I just wouldn't ever bite on comments that were made at public comment periods, cause I think we take department heads off hard.
That, that's what I'm kinda looking out for, is the department heads, and that's why I brought it up with Brian, because I haven't heard a thing about that. I mean, I heard, we had a lot of discussions about a dispatch supervisor. But I've never heard, and, and I know there's been a shortage, cause of retirements, but I never heard that there was any discussion about having two full-time dispatchers on twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, like I said, that's new information for me as well.
Well, that's fine, I just, I was surprised, so.
At least she wasn't malicious.
No, no, Marlene, she's not.
I think she's the opposite in terms of just leaving, she probably felt more comfortable now that she did leave to actually voice it.
But I wondered why.
I, I took it whatever, but I guess to each their own.
If we had an employee coming in here and wanna do that in public comments, though, where would we be with that? That would be fine too.
Would be one, looking at what they're doing during their break or employment hours, and then also if they're politicking in the community, or there'd be other avenues to have discussions.
I was surprised, so.
Question for you, Andrew. Um, CPL grant, I saw it in the EMC thing. Do we apply for those?
I, I'm sorry, what is CPL grant?
Okay, it's the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, and it goes to, uh, funds for conservation projects, restore, enhance, or protect forests, wetlands, and prairies. Well, I saw the request in there, we funded for, in the preliminary budget, ten thousand dollars for the riprap on Manuela. This is for, um, Habitat Game Wildlife Minnesota, Protecting Wetlands. It might be something that we could apply to some of our parks to preserve the riprap and the lake shore.
We'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah, I, I just think it might be a, it was ironic, cause I mentioned to you the other day, I wasn't getting anything from Association of Minnesota Counties, and turned around, I got an email almost right away. But, um, I just, I happen to see this, a lot of funds available, there's some Matthew funds, but we've got a lot of stuff we could probably use it for if we can.
We'll look into the, the grant requirements and see if we have a project that's eligible.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Uh, so next item is, uh, my report, I only have, uh, two items for you today. Uh, the first is a, a follow-up on an item that we've discussed, and I believe you may be aware of, and that's, on August twenty-fifth, uh, Veteran Service Officer Don Duffner submitted his notice of resignation from the county. Veteran Service Office remains open and continues to provide service to the veterans of our community. We're working with the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs to ensure that any issues requiring the VA's support are being addressed. Uh, county is currently accepting applications for the VSO position, will continue to do so until September sixteenth. Our goal is to get the position filled with a highly qualified candidate as soon as possible, so that recruitment is ongoing. Uh, the second item is something that, uh, Diane Winter brought to my attention this morning, and that is that the Community Health Board uh, received notice that, uh, there's some ARP funding outside of what has been allocated to the county, um, that is being made available for community health boards that are interested in, um, local vaccine incentive programs. Don't know how much money, or what that program would be, but I wanted to get a general gauge, if there would be, um, interest or no interest in that, they need to notify, um, the state by Thursday, whether or not Meeker County would be interested. Don't know exactly what the program would entail, um, but big picture, is that a, a yea or a nay?
I'm not a, um, I will tell you that, uh, I am not a, in favor of incentives to tell people how to run their health. So, I would be a nay. Prime West was gonna do, two months ago, I think, or three, a hundred dollars an employee, and for the first time, Chris Billis said he got voted down first. Normally, they go along with most everything. I would be a no to it, so.
Am I a?
No.
This is the general sense that I had gotten from individual conversations, and so I wanted to make sure that was the case before I told Diane that we're gonna be a no on that, so. Thank you very much. That concludes my report, and I will turn it over to you for your reports.
Andrew, who would like to go first with your county commissioner committee updates? Who's ready? I'm ready. Okay. I do not have any reports for today, but I have three upcoming meetings. Gravel Tax Meeting is now on Thursday at five o'clock. We have a public health, speaking of public health, coming up on the fifteenth, Wednesday the fifteenth. And, uh, we have an extension meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first. Everybody.
I made it, I mean, I go?
You can go next.
Well.
Could you get to do Prime West then? You were in first, and I was zooming.
Okay.
Well, first one was CPT, Dylan Morris, um, I believe Andrew was on the line, listening to that. It, um, it was the most spirited discussion that I have been a part of at CPT in eight months.
Oh my, that must have been fun.
And actually, I don't know if it was fun, but it was. Well, the folks were talking.
It's what it takes.
Like bones and log, I mean, they were talking about some issues, and. Like bones and log, I mean, they were talking about some issues and got some stuff out there and said, hey. Um you sit and you look at their financials, um they got a million two in the bank as of June. They take it in at the rate of about two hundred and forty-nine thousand a month. Let's just call it two fifty with expenses at one twenty-three, so they're doing just fine. Had the money on?
When?
So we talked about some of the issues. Now, last Friday I or Thursday I had a discussion with Charlie Sano. And um they're testing the new benefits connect. I don't know, Andrew has been conversing with their administrator down there in um Lion County. They're kind of prepping themselves to withdraw on the uh human services and the payroll from CPT. And allow CPT to continue to rest, so I'm assuming that the testing is going well, but um on the benefits connect. But this is a big issue, it's gotta get fixed. Hopefully, that message was clear to Mike and Gwen and and Bob Kupinski, who have been in a protected mode. I think Charlie said it the best. Um he said that Bob's a good guy, but he's too close. Can't see the forest through the trees, he's just too close to the. Uh being from Stevens County, so a lot of spirited debate on that one. Then uh UCAP, and it's funny, we just got done talking about incentives. We went through the usual reporting stuff. However, we got down to the end, the executive committee recommended giving a three hundred and fifty dollar bonus. Incentive to get vaccinated. And there was, once again, it was a Zoom meeting, which I had questioned at the very start of it. I I didn't understand under open meeting law, how we were zooming, what we were. Um it created quite a debate and I spoke against it, uh as did several others. But there were folks who just wanted to simply adjust the amount. The three hundred and fifty dollars was gonna cost them about seventy thousand dollars. That's I, once again, I'm on the side of I'm not gonna incentivize somebody for doing the right thing. So by the time it got to the end, it was tabled. And so I imagine it's gonna come up again, a future meeting, but for right now, we did, we were able to table it. At an EOC meeting, um Stephen and Andrew were there.
EOC.
EOC, I'm so what did I say?
AOC.
AOC, I'm sorry.
Oh, don't let don't start off on that.
I think you said EOC. What is it?
Anyway, we we spoke, we talked about changing COVID within our state and where we were. And um what we were going to do was the mask mandate coming back to Meeker County, uh all of these things. But I think the decision was, we are gonna take all protocols other than the mask mandate for now. To try and mitigate as best we can, so it's kinda what came out of that. And we had a Prime West meeting. Um I'm gonna I'm gonna defer to, I am only the alternate there, so I will defer. Uh it was nice to see, though, that um their total assets are a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and.
How much?
Or a hundred and eighteen million, I'm sorry.
That's gonna go down though after we right-size everything at the end of the year, but they're doing well.
They have that high and low in July, so their all-time lowest cash is the beginning, first two weeks of July. Their all-time highest cash for the year is the last two weeks of July, cause they get the money from DHS. So uh last is Pro Works. We have found a manager, uh it comes from within, so that is good. It wasn't directly succession planning, but that's the way it kinda ended up working. Uh I think they'll have a real good individual uh to replace Dale when he leaves in uh the end of December, so. Yep, been there a long time, he has, and and done magnificent job with Pro Works. Um it's a, that's a fun board to be on because um those folks care so much, you know, and and you think about the work they do every day. With but the challenged folks that they work with, I mean, a lot of respect goes out to to that group, so. That'd be it.
Chair Breterson, can I jump in on the EOC comment? I think something that this board needs to keep in mind is that since there's no state of emergency powers by the governor. We don't have any as the county, so in order to enact certain things, we're gonna have to um pass a resolution. We're not there yet. But so we can't just knee-jerk pass things at this point, and so we would have to come together either in a special meeting. To make those decisions and um so since there's no appetite at this time, I just want you guys to know that. It can't just happen by um the county administrators' email, it has to be by the board. Which there's no problem with that.
I believe we found out that for seven days, the chair of the board can make a determination for say. You could declare, correct me if I'm wrong, she could declare a move of mer- health emergency within Meeker County that would be valid for seven days.
Correct. But then it needs to be ratified by the rest of the board.
Yes.
If there's an emergency.
Yep.
Pardon?
If there's a big emergency.
Correct, correct.
Don't take that to your head, Julie, you're good. I don't wanna rule that we all gotta wear skirts to the meeting or.
Yeah, I object to that one for sure.
Or we gotta wear a tie with our sport court.
I want a crown for a little seven days, but those things would would have to constitute, number one, an emergency within the county. Such as a huge influx, increase in COVID. And then those would include things like mandating masks and. I I I'm not certain where where that would all go. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to deal with.
Shutting down the building.
Yeah, okay.
You probably wouldn't be able to leave your house for several weeks.
You're worried.
I need my McDonald's fix every now and then, so. All right.
So my first question is, how come you didn't have any meetings and I got two pages of them? And so we gotta maybe do something about that at the first of their kidding. So we had a woodland meeting, Danny and I, and I'm sure Danny will have, and it was a good meeting, I thought, you know. We discussed the um purchase of service contracts, um mainly, and the other counties have some of the same questions that Meeker had. And they were back to, it was very congenial, it was a good meeting. They're going back to meet with their social service directors. And to see if there's, if they're getting the services they need provided, cause uh and so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna talk about it some more. And then, of course, getting back to the CHCBC, when that goes in, that's gonna make a difference in what we deliver to, so. They're gonna look at the needs, we're gonna see what we can fund. They're going through some staffing things right now, like everyone else, so it I thought it was a good meeting.
The only thing I'd re-elaborate is, I think the the CEO is going to meet with all the social services and their account managers.
They are, that's right.
Which is, I think, a huge step for the whole economy or the whole thing.
Because we sit.
That's the only thing I really have to add.
That was a good one. So we sit there and talk about A, B, C, and D, and then we start talking about the money part. We don't, you know, we don't know and the commissioners don't know, so yes, I forgot that. So they're gonna all get together and have some discussions, so that's good. We had a personnel meeting um with the, you didn't bring that up. Am I missing the boat? So with the uh social service director and uh Diane Winter to talk about where we at with. Co- combining the two departments. It's a work in progress. I think the main thing that I brought out of it was, am I in the wrong week?
No, I was just.
I caught him.
I forgot.
That it's very important that we get the staff on board for this, so and Diane and Paul worked very, very well together. They're already doing some things. Andrew, do you, I don't know if you have anything to add. I just was impressed with the meeting.
Yeah, so the the purpose of the meeting was Diane, Paul and I have been working on this and coming up with a framework. And so we wanted to uh meet with the personnel committee to make sure that where we were going with it was not outside of the bounds of what they were thinking. And ultimately, we'll have a larger discussion with the county board, um potentially as early as the October work session. To um get everyone's buy-in and and let you know where we're at with the process, so.
Okay, pretty good.
Yeah, so that was a good discussion and I'm very happy with where that's going. Then we had Prime uh Prime West, I had Prime West Finance um first. They're in good shape. The only thing they're worried about is uh procurement process, because it's, you know, they're sometimes trying to take things. That we do better than they're gonna do down there and that's always a worry and that's a, they work on very hard and it's two-year deals, so.
That's the new assistant.
And the new DHS Assistant Commissioner happens, Jim knows her, he worked with her previously, so they've had a couple of meetings, so that was good. We have a health equity grant, we uh we talked about the requests they've had for that. I think they're putting up three point four million dollars or something to different, and I don't know if Meeker requested anything, but. Um like probably up by the reservations and different things. They put in some requests. Because there's some inequity in well, health is delivered, so that is good. Um and they had over fifty thousand people enrolled in August, but that's just because of COVID still where.
That was a.
It's up. Yeah, it's a lot, but you know, where they're gonna level off at is probably in the forties, but it's because of COVID. So um what else did I, you know, I, oh, and then I had the shelter meeting last Thursday night and they're having the same issues as everyone. The students that come and work get more money an hour from the school than what we're paying our regular people. So we're looking at that. Fifteen dollars an hour, I think, is what work-study people get and we don't, we're not starting our people at fifteen dollars an hour. And then we had a presentation two months ago by Thrivant. And um this Thursday, we had a presentation by Wilmer Community Foundation. And it was just like, cause we have some savings that isn't making a lot of interest, so we're gonna put forty thousand dollars in the Litchfield Thrivant. And forty thousand into the Wilmer Community Foundation, cause they can do some more things with some money. So that's what I had. Good.
I can go.
You'd like to go next.
Uh like Beth said, uh Woodland Centers, I think we covered that pretty good. I mean, I think it's a big step with uh. Our CEO meeting with all the social services and their account managers to figure out, you know, really what is the best POS for the counties. And within centers going forward. So I thought that was a good s- step if that meeting happens. I had a one uh one watershed, one plan for North Fork, which was the first time we met in person, which, good luck, Paul. You better have at least one po- can of pop or so to get through that. Most of the stuff in North Fork is already done. They already passed things, you know, so for me, it's just, you know, listening to what they've already done, you know. So and then um I worked the thrashers, nothing much there, except one sarcastic comment got all the way back to bed. I know, but so that either says that's really good sarcasm by me or it was very controversial.
I heard about it right away on the training portion when I got there.
Which has proud either or, so.
Sold more tickets than anybody else.
I think so. I mean, I had my nine-year-old son doing all the, all the dollars.
He said he did, they said he did, I'm gonna have to tell you this, so I took Jean with me out there and she's never been there with me. So the gal came around to see if we needed anything, she said, well, Commissioner Shifobine, he asked him this when he put the bracelet on. Are you a Republican or a Democrat? Cause that's how we're gonna decide where to put the bracelet on. I said, he did not.
The guy did have a Trump hat on, so he probably did appreciate when I grabbed his left hand. I couldn't resist.
Talk of the town.
And then I uh, I couldn't resist, but. And then I did have a uh, I did meet with the DASL uh veterans, uh the Legion. And I brought, uh Steve was gracious enough to come down there too, to, I needed to go with numbers. Because this is about the VSO and their their main uh main objection is who the VSO uh talks to. In terms of whether it's the social service head or the administrator.
I think.
It actually went pretty congenial, so overall, I thought so.
That is, I think, from my end anyway so far, that's kinda calmed down. I still get the, every once in a while I get something, but. I have a new line I use when I talk to them, so I got it from you, Andrew, but I think that is, one of their main concerns is who's gonna. And I said I thought we were going back to the old way, the old policy, so it would be the administrator, so I think.
Yeah, they are, and they were all very, you know. They had some hard questions, you know, but uh they respect us really well, so and I think it was a good, that's all I had.
All right, well, uh my end of month was actually kinda quiet, but um I did go to the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting. Out at the Fairgrounds, um that was the same day that I went with Daniel over to Legion and DASL. One thing I will say, um that we're starting to notice as veterans groups too within the county is that. The, I'm not gonna say Afghan vets, but uh these these later veterans of the last twenty years. I think they're viewing the VF's and the and the Legions as civic organizations and they're not realizing the, if you will, the brotherhood or camaraderie. That that helps in healing. There's some issues going on with that population, some of the things that they've been through, so. That's something I think as a uh community and as a vet community, we need to reach out to more of these. What I call younger veterans, these these thirty-five-year-old and younger ones, cause I I know a couple in person that struggle with some different things. And it, they don't come and participate in a lot of allegiance things. They'll be members, but they don't participate and I think it would help greatly if they did participate. I think they realize that the Vietnam Vet went through a lot of the same things that they went through and and just getting that uh that common ground, if you will. So that's something that I hope we can uh uh work as a vet group moving forward through too. Um other than that, then I did meet with uh, oh Carla, it is Carla, right? HRA at DASL, they've been looking at and it's something we'll talk to Lisa at EDA, but they've been looking at. There's a low-income housing eightplex in Eden Valley that I didn't realize was low-income housing actually, but and they're looking at um. There, it's up for sale and they're concerned it would get flipped into a different uh role. And there, the HRA would like to see it stay in that group, but there's, and I don't understand how vouchers work exactly, but there's. Different areas that the HRA works with where they can um uh they they use these vouchers. Anyway, it it creates uh, it's supposedly works very well and it it creates some revenue. So I met with with Carla and one of the board members in DASL one day and talked about if EDA would be considered helping. Create some sort of partnership to that, so anyway, that'll something we'll have to discuss moving forward, but that was just kind of a preliminary meeting. Then on the thirtieth, I had Grove City Care uh Board Meeting and uh everything is going um quite well there. They um have had some uh, they've had really good turnouts on their their gatherings with the community. The outreach to the elderly community coming in for their friendship clubs and things like that where they do potlucks. But uh they are kinda curtailing that a little bit with some of the um. Uh COVID things that are going around. Uh one other thing that uh was talked about, I was kinda. HRA and the vets, going back to veterans, uh Carla was telling me and I guess uh Eagles Healing House, that a sock center. They approached HRA, somebody approached them and I don't know if it was HRA or from a separate, but there's a. Couple seventy-eight hundred square foot buildings on eleven-eight-one on Lake Washington, one by Lake Stella, I believe, and they, they're vacant building. I I don't know what they're used for, but they're looking at, they can maybe make like a vets, kinda that Eagles Healing.
I'm wondering if that, I bet that one on Lake Washington is that Alzheimer's.
It's the memory care one.
Memory care one, I bet.
There we go.
And where was the other one?
Uh there there must be, well, Lake Washington, Lake Stella, Stellers, Stellers.
Well, Lake Ridge is the one just south of DASL, I think that's sitting empty too, isn't it?
That's probably one she was talking about, but but they looked at, you know, at some uses for that. I know they had Eagles Healing House though, and that's an argument I know Corey's actively involved with them on that sock center and. It's, you know, sort of looking at some things to try and.
The one on Washington is for sale, I think it's one million some odd dollars.
Yeah, they're both for sale.
Yeah, it's actually on the water, it is back from the water.
I I'm not familiar with them, but so, but that's about all I had. That's enough.
Is there any additional business that should come before this board today?
Yeah, she does, I noticed that. I told her I had painters at the house. I'm refraining from tonight coming. I'm refraining from snide comments.
Enough snide comments. I believe we will adjourn today's meeting. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Well.